Good evening, this regular meeting of the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees will come to order please. The date is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. The time is 6:03 and we have a confirmed forum. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the Board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated in multiple languages. One of our outstanding students from America's high school will lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Nazia Atkins is a standout student. In addition to achieving straight A's, she excels as a champion basketball player, a record-breaking track and field athlete, and a trailblazer in women's high school sports. In May, during the inaugural Region 19 Female Flag Football Championship, Nazia was named the most valuable player for her outstanding performance, leading the Trail Blazers to an unprecedented victory. A rising senior, Nazia is looking forward to an even more exciting final year. Her top priority continues to be her academic performance. She is currently enrolled in the biomedical pathway and aspires to have a career in forensics. Nazia, we wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Please join us in standing for the pledge as Nazia leads us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give Nazia a round of applause, please. Continuing with our agenda then, the interim superintendent's comments, Mr. Vasquez, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board and members of the SISD community. Thank you all for being here this evening. One of our Board members celebrated a birthday earlier this month. Please join me in wishing Ryan Woodcraft a happy belated birthday. I hope you had a good one. Just to start with, I would like to commend SISD on outstanding star and EOC performance. Preliminary data from the Spring 2024-25 assessments show continued strength across the district. Elementary performance has improved and middle school performance has stayed among the best in the region. We've gained more than three percentage points in third through eighth grade math, reading, and science. Currently, SISD is leading the way regionally in grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eighth grade reading, eighth grade science and social studies, English II, and U.S. history. We also had gains in Algebra I and biology at the high school level. Parents and students, you can see your results through the Skyward portal or the TEA website. I just want to commend our staff, in particular our principals, assistant principals, teachers, students for staying focused. There were a lot of distractions, a lot of challenges here, but they kept the main thing, the main thing, and they excelled. They did an amazing job and we could not be more proud of them. So congratulations to everyone involved. This past Thursday, we had our first ever recruitment and enrollment expo at the SAC 2. It was an amazing event. Hundreds and hundreds of people were there that evening. I want to thank the Elite Enrollment Committee headed up by Dr. Graham and Amanda Martinez and the entire team. I want to thank them for putting on an outstanding event. We enrolled new students, welcomed families, and united the district in a remarkable way. I'm so grateful to everyone involved who was there during the day, getting set up in the heat, sitting at tables, our maintenance and operations staff, technology, PR. And I just want to thank also the principals who were there, the parents and the students, the teachers who gave up their time to be there as well, all of our staff here who is over there. It was just a great way to highlight and showcase the district and bring the district together. So thanks to everyone involved and congratulations. And then finally, earlier this month, we convened the Finance and Operations Advisory Committee. It's a group of employees, district and community members, who were appointed by the Board Trustees and myself to participate in an assessment of the district's finances. The committee will assist in guiding the district's financial path forward by making recommendations to the Board of Trustees on cost-saving measures, potential revenue generation, and provide input in the development of a strategic financial plan to proactively address the district's financial challenges. We have met with the committee two times and we have two more meetings scheduled for July. So I want to thank all of the members who have participated in this engaging and transparent process. We appreciate their time and service on this important committee. And finally, upcoming events. The district will be closed next week from June 30th through July 4th, but we will return on July 7th. So I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and hope you have a safe and restful break. And this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Continuing then with open forum. Each person who signed up was provided a copy of the open forum basic rules and advised when they signed up that policy B-E-D applies to the process. Please respect the process during your presentation. As a reminder, each speaker will be provided three minutes. We'll proceed to open forum. Our first speaker is Dr. Carmen Levas Graham.
Good evening, trustees, President Nahara, and Mr. Vasquez Superintendent. As you know, and most of you were there, I think almost all of you were there, we raised our recruitment and enrollment efforts to meet the challenge of getting more students in our district. We created a team that was focused on sharpening our competitive edge and created the expo that you all attended. At the expo, our team showcased what makes SISD unique compared to other districts. Our commitment to student success is evident in the amazing programs that were at the showcase there that we have in the district and our recent data, because nobody is competing with that. Administrators addressed the interest of students and parents with an inclusive view of our schools and it was an excellent precision tactic of instant engagement and personalized responses to all of their inquiries, since most of our principals and assistant principals were presenting there at each of their tables. So how did this come about? Well, our committee of 20 members worked together on our SMART goals and objectives. Thank you, Ms. Macias, for teaching that. Since September 2024, we had 37 meetings where we engaged in discussions, very intense discussions on the purpose of how we were going to do, the ideas, the progress, and more. This, by the way, is a whole year and will continue. It's not just a one event at the expo. We started earlier and will continue. We also added a group of positive, active volunteer parents and we also invited students to join our effort. Different individuals had different assignments and together we created a phone bank. So we made lots of phone calls to the families that had left SISD and we engaged our PR for marketing of the expo as well. And together we promoted our multiple state-of-the-art programs plus onsite enrollment, which really had a very good turnout and we didn't anticipate how good that was going to be. But positive thinking got it there. We also build on our strong academic reputation of Socorro ISD and it looks like we hit the right audiences because we had a very good turnout and the return on the investment was remarkable because we had our partners in education donate the prizes and some of the food and things like that. I did make one observation that I decided I'm going to share with you. As I was looking around, because I was there the entire time, I did not see any of the folks that often come to this podium to voice and complain about SISD. Thank you all for attending and we appreciated you being there.
Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Could I have a quick comment? Just wanted to say, I think all of us were personally there. Wow, great job. SISD is back and it was great to see everybody there with smiles, welcoming our students and families and just having a good time. So, great job.
Our next speaker, Jennifer Feeley.
Good evening, members of the Board, President Nahara. My name is Jennifer Feeley. I am currently the nurse practitioner at the SISD Employee Clinic. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, of course, everything that's going on with the clinic and the decision being made about it being closed. I don't know if all of you know this, but our annual operating budget since opening the clinic in 2020 ranged from $800,000 to $1.2 million. This investment supported a full dedicated care team, a physician, two nurse practitioners, a physician's assistant, seven medical assistants, and a custodian. It also covered in-house lab testing such as CMPs, lipid panels, A1Cs, microalbumin, and hemoglobin, as well as durable medical equipment, medical supplies, vaccines, and essential medications, all provided to our patients free of charge. This wasn't just healthcare, it was compassionate personalized care rooted in community values. The proposal on the table today is a fraction of that. It only includes office visits staffed by two nurse practitioners, two medical assistants, and two schedulers. It's not an equivalent replacement. It's a reduction in services, a reduction in access, and a reduction in outcomes. What's most troubling is that this transition seems to have been made without the unified planning of our community that our community deserves. A collaborative approach could have been prevented, confusion, and protected continuity of care for thousands. But beyond the budget lines and job titles, there's something even more important, impact. Every year, this clinic helped prevent unnecessary ER visits. It saved families from high insurance bills by catching illnesses early and managing them proactively. Most importantly, we saved lives because we took the time to listen, to screen fully, and to detect life-threatening conditions before they became emergencies. That is the essence of value-based care and this is what our patients, our employees, our neighbors, our families stand to lose. As a parent of children and a member of the Socorro community, I urge you to consider not just what's being proposed, but what's being taken away. Let's not sacrifice quality for convenience. Let's not accept less when our people deserve more. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Dr. Alba Nidia Navadis, please.
Good afternoon, interim superintendent Mr. Vasquez, members of the Board, and my patients. I'm here today not to ask for an extension or reversal of the clinic closure, but to speak directly to my patients with honesty and gratitude and to represent the Socorro community. As a proud SISD graduate, a former teacher, and now a physician, I chose to return to serve the very community that raised me. When I joined the district, the vision was clear: improve the health of SISD employees. That's exactly what we worked toward. We built more than a clinic. We built a model focused on value-based care, high-quality, personalized healthcare that improved outcomes and reduced costs. Not fee-for-service medicine, but thoughtful care that led to fewer ER visits, fewer hospitalizations, and lower insurance claims. We offered access during lunch, conferences, or via telemedicine, always trying to meet patients where they were. In 2023 alone, we conducted over 10,000 visits on a $1.2 million budget, which included full-service primary care, lab testing, durable medical equipment, and nurse visits with no hidden cost to patients. That care resulted in an estimated $2 million in savings for the district, not including the financial relief to employees. Still, when we were given the initial closure notice for June 30th by Dr. Vasquez and HR, I knew that that timeline jeopardized patient safety. That's why many of you were contacted early via Twitter, emails, calls, because I knew how critical your care was. The later extension to September 30th helped, but confusion and harm had already occurred. We provide primary care for nearly 4,000 patients and every day since the announcement, we've been doing our best to safely transition care. But we need a unified plan and clear communication from the district to do this responsibly. I strongly believe that choosing a model where SISD pays $875,000 upfront for just 6,000 visits does not offer better savings, nor does it improve healthcare outcomes for our employees. In fact, it increases long-term costs by billing insurance and shifting the financial burden onto staff and their families. As both a physician who has cared deeply for this community and a stakeholder raising my children in SISD, paying property taxes, I'm personally and professionally invested in the district's future. We owe it unto our employees to choose a model that prioritizes their health and truly maximizes value. To my patients, thank you. Your trust, your messages, your presence has meant everything. This clinic was not just numbers, it was relationships, healing, and dignity. And that has no price tag. It has been my honor to care for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Ms. Rosie Perez, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, esteemed members of the Board and Superintendent Mr. Vasquez. My name is Rosie Perez and I proudly represent the members of West Texas Alliance. First, I want to acknowledge the important work this Board and district leadership have undertaken to address the significant budget deficit. We recognize the complexity of these financial challenges and understand that while progress has been made, this will be an ongoing process, especially given the state's continued underfunding of public education. We know that until the state steps up to fully fund our schools, difficult decisions will continue to land on the shoulders of local districts like ours. That said, as you move forward with budget planning and health insurance, we urge you to keep in mind how changes to employee health insurance will disproportionately impact many of the very individuals who serve our students every day: our teachers, our bus drivers, instructional aides, custodians, food service workers, and other support staff. These are often the lowest-paid employees in our system, yet they are among the most essential to the daily operations of our schools. Raising insurance premiums and increasing out-of-pocket costs may save the district money on paper, but in practice, it can mean that these employees are forced to choose between seeking medical care and making ends meet. These decisions are not just financial, they are human. We respectfully ask that as new insurance plans or modifications are considered, the district ensure that all costs, including premiums, copays, and deductibles, are negotiated with the employees' well-being in mind. The goal should be to provide the best possible coverage at the most affordable rate, especially for those who can least afford a higher burden. Additionally, we strongly encourage the Board and District to actively seek employee feedback before and after implementing changes to health insurance plans. Employees deserve a voice in evaluating whether the plan in place truly meets their needs and supports their families. Transparency and collaboration are key to building trust and making informed decisions that work for everyone. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to our students and staff. We look forward to working together to ensure that every decision made reflects both fiscal responsibility and compassion for the people who keep our schools running. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Tommy Hill.
Yeah, I'm just going to talk about, it's good to see you guys, Mr. Vasquez, Nahara, the rest of the Board, Mr. Woodcraft. We understand that you guys got a little bit of extra and it's not much, but it's going to make for sure that we have a balanced budget for the first time. And everybody's going to get a little bit. I mean, teachers, well deserved, well deserved for a long time. They deserve what they're getting. But what is more on everybody's mind is what's going to happen to everybody about the health insurance. We need to be able to afford to go to a doctor. We need to be able to not have to pay 50 and 75. We might have to, but that is one thing that cannot be raised. That is really hard for hourly employees to do that. I mean, every time you go say hi to someone, it's $50. It just doesn't work on an hourly wage. And I understand that we're looking to set something up that's going to be more affordable for those costs, but that's shifting everything over to that and that's a preparation and getting everything ready. So what we're trying to say is there's a little bit extra here. You're going to have a balanced budget, but we're all focused on not overdoing it on the health insurance. And, well, a lot of us are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, however, that speaker signed up to a specific agenda item. When we arrive at that agenda item, I will go ahead and call that speaker up. Continuing then with our agenda, executive session. This meeting is to be closed for discussion and consideration of a lone finalist for Superintendent of Schools under Texas Government Code Section 551.074. The time is 6:24 and the date is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. The time is 6:24 and the date is Tuesday, June 24, 2025.
Socorro ISD offers 45 different pathways in CTE. We have added PTEx, Pathways in Technology, Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies. And we also, throughout the district, offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals so we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school. I feel like I'm doing something that I want to and the day goes by quick, super quick. And it just gives that sense of well-being and family and it really is a dream because I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend, and through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection offered for our students.
The Libertas Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity, even as a high school student, starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you wanna go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school, which is really unique. It's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun, but we really have become like a family. I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a huge investment, not only in equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our teachers' credentials, getting them training, keeping them up to date with current standards. Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer our kids is supersedes most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that we'll continue to progress with what's leading our schools.
So our dual-language program consists of two different types of models. We have the 90-10, which is for pre-k students, and this is where the students are in a classroom with one teacher. Depending on their first language, they're gonna get 90% of the instruction in English, 10% in Spanish, or vice versa, 90% in Spanish, 10% in English. And then we have our 50-50 model, and this starts from kinder all the way to fifth grade, and this is where the students have two teachers where they're learning both languages, English and Spanish, 50% and 50% of the time depending on the taught subject and language.
The dual-language program is so much more than just learning to speak in another language. They learn how to read, how to write, and they learn about the other culture and how to appreciate it, and they become very successful.
In order for the students to become bilingual and bilingual, they need to make sure that they are consistent with the program at least five years. Once a student completes five full years in the dual-language program, then they can qualify for a Spanish high school credit that they take with them when they're in middle school.
I think it's important to learn English and Spanish so people can feel happy that you can communicate them in Spanish or English. So when I'm older, I could, and they ask me questions in Spanish, I can answer them in Spanish and English.
We are growing our students in a very competitive global society where dualism is extremely important in any type of business that you go into, not just into education. The students, we're preparing them to be global competitive citizens of society, and having that dualism in their pocket is really going to open doors for them. I can say that SISD is truly the district that offers many opportunities for our students, and I vouch that dual language is not just opening doors for our students to become bilingual and bilingual, but it's opening doors for their future.
Socorro ISD makes learning innovative. We fly drones, we take center stage, we take care of the environment, and we learn to take care of our health and become lifelong learners. Our new elementary academies offer unique programs to inspire, challenge, and prepare us for success. Register now at sisd.net and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
The Socorro Independent School District is committed to helping all students find their voice and achieve their highest potential. We understand the important role that families play in our children's education, and we welcome you, our military-connected families, to Team SISD. With 46 schools designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency, the most of any school district in the El Paso region, Team SISD is committed to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families through a variety of resources and services. These include a comprehensive website for military families, a campus transition program, multiple special events, military family life counselors, and a military liaison at each of our 51 campuses who all reach out and serve our military-connected families. Team SISD stays in close contact with our Fort Bliss counterparts to access and share information, ideas, and trainings to provide the best education for our 6,500-plus military-connected students. To assist with the social and emotional needs of our students, we maximize support services by engaging with our school counselors, including our military and family life counselor and local agencies such as NAMI, the YWCA, Child Guidance Center, local daycare providers, and the Paso del Norte and Meadows Family Leadership Council. We value and greatly appreciate the sacrifice our military parents make for our country, our community, and our children. We salute you, and we are delighted to have the opportunity to serve you and your family in our district. Thank you for being part of our district and helping us ensure that Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, the Socorro Independent School District hosted the 2025 SISD Teacher of the Year Elite Eight Reception at the Technology Service Center. All SISD Campus Teachers of the Year were honored with a special token of appreciation commemorating their achievement, and the top Elite Eight finalists were announced during the special ceremony.
The words can't describe the gratitude that I have to the district, to my campus, to my administration team, to my colleagues, to my wife, my family. Just very, very blessed, overwhelming feeling of just, you know, gratefulness.
You're always trying to like just say your name in your brain over and over and over, and then you actually see it, and then it's like, oh my gosh! And you're just shocked, shocked that out of all the 50 teachers, you're one of the top eight selected.
Dr. Ignacio Astorga, principal at Socorro High School, was named the District Nine Administrator of the Year at this year's District Nine Spring Conference at America's High School. The purpose of District Nine is to develop leadership abilities in students and advisors, promote democracy as a way of life, and establish and uphold high standards for local school councils.
It's a hard work of everybody. It's a culmination of not just the faculty and staff, but of what our students do and what our expectations are of our kids. And our expectations should be high for any school that we're at. And if you challenge the kids, they will reach that challenge, and that's what our kids have done, they have reached that challenge. And this is just a culmination of everything. So this award's not for me, it's for Socorro High School and our kids.
I was so honored that Ms. Lopez reached out to me to write a letter of rec. for him. He has been my principal since the beginning of freshman year, so throughout this whole journey, I have been with him, nothing but support from him, and anything we have given of ideas or anything that we need, he has supported us 100% and no doubt in anything that we can do. Writing the letter of recommendation for him felt so natural, anything came out, and just describing him as a wonderful principal was amazing to do. And I know he supports a student council, so to put him in a D9 level was just an amazing experience to do, and I'm so glad not only myself, but the rest of my council could help and surprise him. It was hard getting him out here because he knows everything that goes on in our campus, so a little lie to get him here, I was totally okay with it. And seeing his surprise and seeing his reaction just made my day and my year to make him a D9 Administrator of the Year.
The American Federation of Teachers gave away over 1,000 books to students and teachers of all grade levels at Colonel Ben Narbith Elementary School as part of the Reading Opens the World Initiative with First Book.
We believe in giving back to our community much-needed resources to make sure that our students succeed. We like to give them away and make sure that there's plenty of opportunities for our kids to be successful and thrive.
It's a whole other world. It opens up a whole new world for our students, and for them to just get away from the TV and the social media and just sit down with a good book and enjoy that, they're really excited about it.
I always suggest that our kids read because it can help them be like super smart. They can learn how to pronounce bigger words.
Socorro ISD interim superintendent James Vazquez surprised the top four school-support Employee of the Year finalists with a special gift and visited each of their campuses and departments. Francisco Felix Martinez is the head custodian at Mission Early College High School.
For me, the most important thing is that I'm part of a bigger thing than all of us. And what it is for me is that having a clean classroom, clean restrooms, and to see those kids, the students that are happy when they graduate, and they graduate from college is something that is priceless to me because I'm part of it, and I'm making a difference for my campus.
Armando Álvarez is a crosswalk monitor at Loma Verde Elementary School.
I couldn't believe it though, you know? I didn't think you were coming to see me, like I said earlier, though. I was just like doing my regular stuff like I always do, trying to help the kids, make sure that they have their food and everything, but I am really surprised.
Jesús Salas is the head custodian for the Department of Athletics.
I feel so proud myself, and I feel so proud of the team that we work here in the Lakes Department, and to be recognized, like, it's awesome, guys. Also, I feel like the district, like the whole district employees, all custodians, I'm representing that, not only my facility, I'm representing like maintenance and operations at all, you know? So I feel amazing.
And Deney Muñoz is the campus secretary at Specialist Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
We have an amazing team here, and they're my babies. The team here is literally my baby, and just to see my team out here in the front supporting me when I'm the one that supports them all the time, it's just so fulfilling. It's really just an emotion that's so fulfilling.
The University of Texas at El Paso awarded excellent scholarships to 38 students from America's High School and 19 students from Montwood High School. The scholarships that range from $2,000 to $8,000 will allow students to pursue their dreams of higher education at UTEP.
It goes beyond just that you pick of the ranking, that they do so many things. The family dynamics are so complex, and there are students that sometimes they never thought of getting a scholarship, and only like smart students know. Everything matters. So you will have students, you will have parents, and for the first time, they're gonna be talking about more than just financially, they're gonna be talking about my son, my daughter is getting a scholarship, a UTEP Excellent Scholarship, and we're so proud of that.
I feel really good about myself because during like the previous years, I was kind of like down about my grades, but like I got them up, and knowing that I got this scholarship like just gives me that peace of mind.
This is just an exciting opportunity. Relieving this financial burden is just something that everyone is looking for. I believe being able to be a recipient of the scholarship is something so honorable. UTEP was the university I was planning on attending, so just having that leverage on that concern of like, how am I gonna pay for this and all that, like just it going away is something that I'm grateful to receive as a person.
I'm actually really excited. I didn't know it was happening. I thought this was like an information thing, like they'd be like, oh, like you're a finalist, but you have to do this, this, and this to win it. I didn't know we were gonna win, but I'm actually really excited.
The Libertas Academy for Law, Government, and Public Administration was awarded the Haddon Summers Civic Foundation Grant for the ninth year in a row. This grant allows students to learn about civics during their spring break and introduces incoming eighth graders to the Advanced Academic Academy. This year's focus was the First Amendment.
We use that topic because I think the kids find it very interesting, but it also allows them an opportunity to understand the concept of researching, the concepts of looking up court decisions, and then keeping updated with, you know, current decisions, with how it works. And then we also gave them an insight of to, you know, what are their rights on the school campus, because they think that they have unlimited rights, and it gives them an opportunity to see how, you know, Supreme Court decisions, local decisions also impact their daily lives.
I feel like it's going to give me a head start at life, mostly, and it's going to help me advance in school, help me with a lot of different things.
I mean, I already know about the First Amendment, but it goes so deep into detail about like our freedoms and stuff and the court cases about the First Amendment.
Team SISD sophomores, juniors, and seniors explored future career options at the Annual College Career and Job Expo at Montwood High School. Students got the opportunity to speak with college, technical school representatives, and meet with local business and industry partners to learn about possible opportunities available to them, such as internships or employment opportunities.
The reality of our students going to school without working is, it's been an issue here in El Paso and nationwide now. Information provided about our state's graduation rates, UTEP's graduation rates are up, but they're still at a six-year, 42% graduation rate, which means our kids who are going to school at UTEP, they're taking time to go there, and they're most likely working, supporting the family, and paying bills as they're going to school. So they leave our schools with college credits as well as skills to help them find a higher-paying job. They probably don't have to work so much to be able to achieve their goals in a quicker time period.
I really like it, and everybody was super helpful about their tips with interviews, and overall, it was super nice. I've been trying to look for more of a better job that pays better, obviously, because I'm about a graduate high school, and I need to start looking for a better job.
Coming here made me realize like a lot, like you can do, you can benefit for so much just by showing up, asking questions, and asking around, like, how does this work and stuff like that? So yeah, it's really beneficial. And going to summer, I do wanna look for, again, internships or jobs or whatnot, make that like little money on the exercise, and again, take that like big step next in life, you know?
That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again, and see you next time. Thank you again and see you next time. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, Team SISD High Schools officially launched the Region 19 Girls Flag Football Pilot Championship in partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans. The schools participated in a blind draft to determine the team they will be affiliated with.
This opportunity is for those female athletes. I think of my own daughter when we talk about this. And so we just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in a growing sport. There are scholarship opportunities. Some of the schools, smaller schools across the nation are offering scholarships for it. So it's just another opportunity to showcase the amazing female athletes we have in the El Paso region.
I'm just really excited to get to, you know, learn as a coach and then help the girls learn and, you know, be football players. Like that's just something that we're going to learn together. And I think it's going to be a really great experience. And then hopefully expand it to UIL. Amen. That's going to be amazing.
It's truly their opportunity. They deserve the right to go compete. Football is the greatest sport, in my opinion, in this world. And so, and so we do, we do so much for our men. We go above and beyond for our men. Tackle and all these different things, 7-on-7 for our boys. It's our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we give those same opportunities and we give the same energy, we give the same effort to our young ladies because they deserve it, they've earned it, and it's just their time.
Students from Socorro ISD's six comprehensive high schools participated in Career Con XXL at Eastlake High School. Students had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with employers, learn about exciting career paths, and get advice on taking the necessary steps towards their dream job.
This is one of two Career Con events we have. We, all of our sophomores take a financial literacy class. And it's a semester course. So we have a job con or a career con in the fall for about 1,800 students. And we have one again in the spring for approximately 1,800 students. And financial literacy, we cover three different areas. Personal financial literacy, as well as college readiness and career readiness. Students create their endorsement when they're eighth grade. They revisit it when they're a sophomore. The last time they can change their endorsement is by the start of their junior year. So it's prime time for the kids to prep for college courses and also to review their endorsement and review the different careers that they can prepare for while in high school.
We get to like experience all these type of careers that we could like go into the future. Like we have different options on which jobs we could participate. We have different options we can explore. Because not everybody likes the same job and not everybody's going to have the same job. So we just get to experience the different careers.
It helps a lot like with people who aren't really sure like what they want to do after high school. And just helps me like be aware of like what are my options and like what exactly like the jobs are into detail.
Team SISD's Project Search program hosted a Coffee Connections event where students with developmental disabilities can find a job and gain work experience. Students were able to talk to and network with possible employers who are looking to hire.
It started off initially as a networking event just to get the program out there and have the students highlight their many skillsets. However, as you've seen today, it has evolved more into a reverse drop where these students are prepared to be interviewed. They have resumes in hand. They're highlighting the many skillsets to today's employers that got invited.
It feels amazing. And scary because this is your first time.
Project Search has always been a big program for me that I love to just volunteer like I'm in a personal time. And these kids are amazing. So here like at Rice Federal Credit Union, we are looking for the next diamond like in the rough. And we feel that these kids are going to be those diamonds in the rough.
Pebble Hills High School student athletes Dorian Jaramillo and Sarian Quarles signed their letters of intent to play football and further their education at Tyler Junior College and Cisco College.
I picked Cisco because it makes me feel like I'm at home. Like they make me feel comfortable with who I am. I mean, I'm a little nervous, but I'm excited. I'm happy.
TJC, I chose them because they're a great junior college. They're one of the best in the conference and the nation. And they're really good developing football players and getting to the next level to Division One, which is where I want to be. And I really like the coaching staff and the city. So it's a really good place.
Socorro ISD students demonstrated how technology has enhanced their educational experiences and equipped them with the skills to succeed in a digital world at the Annual Academic Technology Showcase at the District Service Center. The district-wide event welcomes students from all grade levels to compete, showcasing their technology skills, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and teamwork.
We cannot do this without the support of the teachers and the enthusiasm that they have in their classrooms every day. And that's what translates into the energy that you're seeing today because it's evidence that kids are enjoying their learning and that they're excited about using technology in their classrooms. So when they get an opportunity to showcase their work, that's fulfilling the mission of this great event that we actually give them an opportunity to show to the community all of the wonderful things that they're getting to experience and be a part of in our district.
It feels amazing. I love it so much. I think that it gives me one foot in front of the door when it comes to going to college and stuff like that.
I think it's great. I think it's a really big opportunities for kids, you know, to get to, they get to experience, you know, different topics, different things. And I feel like that's great because my child gets to experience it. And I just think that's great.
The Socorro Independent School District hosted its third annual Black History Month Art Contest at the District Service Center. 300 students from districts around the region showcased their art pieces of African-Americans in labor.
If we fail to storytell, if we fail to acknowledge what, you know, horrible things have happened in history and how we have overcome, then we're doomed to repeat that. And so for these kids from elementary to high school, it's super important that they know these stories and that, you know, we've done things to make people's lives better for a reason. And so, I mean, what greater avenue to combine art and history?
But it starts with the foundation of knowing what the history is about. So learning the history, knowing where we have come from, give them a better picture of where we are going. So just excited to see their creativity and all of the hard work they did and learning about these subjects of their artwork.
I'm really happy. I'm really proud of myself. I like how, I like that I get to show my parents what I can do. And just like I like to show everyone what I can do.
America's high school student athletes signed their letters of intent to play and further their education at the next level. Isaac Arrieta will further his education and play baseball at El Paso Community College.
I'm just excited to just continue my career. It means it's a big thing. Since I was little, I've been wanting to play.
Isabella Núñez will be attending Grand Canyon University, where she will continue to play volleyball.
I'm super excited. It's a great school and I can't wait.
Gisela Vázquez will continue to run track and cross country at the University of West Virginia State.
I feel excited, a little nervous, but it's like a good thing.
Visit sisd.net to get the complete list of students who have committed to furthering their education while continuing to pursue their athletic passion at the collegiate level. That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again and see you next time. Padres del paso, estudiantes nuevos y actuales ya se pueden inscribir en el Distrito de Socorro para prekinder a último año. El equipo SISD ofrece un aprendizaje práctico e innovador donde sus pequeños estudiantes crezcan en su trayectoria académica. Unas sean nuestras academias académicas de primer nivel, programas deportivos, bellas artes, y educación profesional y técnica. Registres en línea y aprovecha tu oportunidad en el equipo SISD. This past year has tested us in ways we've never imagined. From navigating uncertainty to overcoming challenges, each of us has played a crucial role in keeping our community strong and resilient. Through it all, one thing has remained clear: our commitment to our students' success. As we reflect on the challenges we faced, we recognize the strength of our unity and the power of being all-in. Being all-in means more than just showing up. It means giving our best every day, supporting each other, and fostering an environment where every student can thrive. It's about going the extra mile, finding solutions together, and lifting each other up during difficult times. Those who are all-in inspire others. They show us what's possible when we refuse to settle for mediocrity. They remind us that greatness lies not in the outcome, but in the journey. The journey of pushing boundaries, overcoming setbacks, and becoming stronger with every step. So as we face the new school year, remember this: Life rewards those who are willing to give it their all. Whether you're pursuing a dream, facing a challenge, or simply striving to be the best, choose to be all-in. Because when you are all-in, you're a champion for all of us: students, employees, parents, and families. We are all-in for Team SISD.
Socorro Independent School District has more than 48,000 students and 51 campuses. But we're not just a number. Here, we're cared for, we're loved, we belong. Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Want to be a health professional? Once a bulldog, always a bulldog. Want to design skyscrapers? It's an empire for that. Have you heard, "The early bird gets the worm"? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over 60 years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities, and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March 3rd for kinder through 12th grade. Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs, and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait. Secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
Socorro ISD offers 45 different pathways in CTE. We have added PTECs, Pathways and Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies. And we also, throughout the district, offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals so we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school. I feel like I'm doing something that I want to. And the day goes by quick, super quick. And it just gives that sense of well-being and family. And it really is a dream because I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend. And through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection offered for our students.
The Libertad Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity, even as a high school student starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you want to go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school, which is really unique. It's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun. But we really have become like a family. I really have found some amazing... I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a huge investment, not only in equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our teachers' credentials, getting them training, keeping them up to date with current standards. Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer. Our kids superseds most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that we'll continue to progress with what's leading our schools.
We're back from executive session. The time is 7:11 PM. The date is still Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. And we still have a confirm quorum. Continuing with our agenda, 6A. Discussion and announcement of the selection of a loan finalist for superintendent of schools and to approve other action incident thereto. Do you have a motion for the loan finalist?
Mr. Nahara, I would like to nominate and make a motion to approve Mr. James Vazquez as our loan finalist for superintendent of Socorro Independent School District.
I second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? Okay, and since this is for loan finalist, we'll go with a roll call vote, starting over on my right-hand side.
Aye.
So before I make my vote, I would just like to say that coming, really from a concerned parent perspective, about a year, year and a half ago to where we are today, I've been extremely impressed, not only with the district staff and the turnaround that we have made, but by the leadership under Mr. Vazquez. So from a concerned parent, from a taxpayer perspective, and now as a board member, there are dozens of folks that we looked at, but by far, in my opinion, Mr. Vazquez has the right leadership to lead us into the future. And for that, I vote yes.
Mr. Gero?
Aye.
Ms. Macias?
I'll proudly say aye. You are SISD.
I too would like to take an opportunity to say Socorro's back and I credit the leadership of Mr. Vazquez and the feeling of unity and respect and transparency. Thank you for where you've brought us and where you are leading us. So I proudly say yes.
I would also like to make a couple of comments. Been monitoring closely the situation of Socorro ISD over the last couple of years, or over the last two years. And it has been impressive to see the district where it is today to where it was just about a year and a half ago. And I know that that came with difficult decisions. But I think that with a steady hand and with steady leadership at the helm, I would agree with Ms. Garda's comments that SISD is back. But most importantly, it's moving into the future. And I think that there is no one else better from all of the candidates that we were able to review to lead us into that future and to lead us through uncertain times as well. Because I think that that's very important to note with that same steady leadership than Mr. Vazquez. So I proudly vote for Mr. Vazquez to become the next superintendent for the Socorro Independent School District.
Dr. Nahoson?
Yes, sir. We probably need to have an amendment to the motion to allow the board president and legal counsel to negotiate the contract before you actually vote. So if someone would make a friendly amendment to that effect and second it, then you can make your comment, then you can take your vote. And I also would recommend, just because of if, that you take a very short recess after the vote so that we can deal with the media and everything else and then we can go on to business.
So amendment is requested?
So based on Dr. Henoosan's comment, I will amend my motion, not only to name Mr. Vazquez as our loan finalist, but also to allow you, President Nahara and legal counsel, to negotiate the terms of the contract accordingly.
amended motion.
Again.
Second. Okay, let's just go again real quickly. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Woodcraft?
Aye.
Ms. Macias?
Aye.
Aye.
And as for myself, Mr. Vazquez is the right leader at the right time. I've been with the district for some time now, certainly been part of the board when we were a great district and been here, you know, through the struggles. What I can say is Mr. Vazquez has put us on the right path. I look forward to the future. I know it's been a protracted superintendent search, but great things take time. And I think taking our time served us well. We heard the community loud and clear. Through other superintendent searches, superintendent searches, we were looking for the best leader. And this time, we heard from the community, we wanted, the community wanted from us the best, who is also local. They're both important. And we've seen why that's important. And luckily, in Mr. Vazquez, we see that we get both: the best, local, someone who is part of the community, someone who's committed to the community, and someone certainly who has earned the community's trust. And when I say "community," I don't just mean the community, parents. I also mean the trust of the employees as well, who, you know, he certainly values and respects, even through some of the difficult decisions. And as I've said, we're certainly on the right path. His experience, his leadership over the last more than a year certainly demonstrates his ability to lead this district. So I vote a firm and absolute yes. So with that, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Vazquez.
Mr. Vazquez, would you like to say anything?
Well, if you'd... Let me take a sip of water here real quick. If you had told me when I first started teaching this district back in 1995 that 30 years later I would be the superintendent, I never would have believed you. Just truly humbled and honored by the confidence placed to me by the board to lead the district, especially during these challenging times. If these past six weeks with this new board are an indication, the future of this district is bright under your leadership. So I look forward to being part of this team of aid and working with you all. I also want to thank Dr. Michaelino-Hoson, Andrew Kim, for your guidance and leadership and mentorship over these past 14 months. Just want to thank my wife Laura, my kids Luke and Aaron for their support, their love, and their patience throughout my career and especially these past 14 months. You know, when I was named acting superintendent back in April of last year, I was very public with the fact that I did not want the permanent position. So what changed? A couple of things. So, you know, first of all, we're moving in the right direction and we've made significant progress, but the work is not done yet. And I just wanted the opportunity to finish the job. But most importantly, I just, I love the district and I love the people in this district. From our cabinet and our district leadership, who have been absolutely amazing, to our principals, campus leadership, teachers, staff, students, from our child nutritional services staff, maintenance and operations, security, police officer, everybody's just been so supportive and so amazing. And, you know, they've been asked to do more with less over the past year and they persevered and we finished the year strong. So who wouldn't want to work with a team like this? And I know we have the right team in place to not only get us through this, but return our district back to excellence. Finally, I just want to thank the community also for their support. I've been a member of the community since 1998. I've lived within the district boundaries. I've lived in the same house in the El Dorado area since 2008. And my wife was a teacher in the district. My son graduated from America's high school. So this is personal to me. I have a vested interest in the community. So I just, you know, I look forward to continuing to work together with the staff and with the community. And I look forward to moving this district forward together with all of you. Thank you all so much for your support.
Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute recess and be back. The time is 7:21, so we'll be back at 7:31. We're back from our recess. The time is seven thirty-seven PM. The date is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, 2025, and we still have a quorum. Continuing with the next item, six B, consider approval of the 2025-2026 board meeting calendar and agenda cycle. The board meeting calendar has been developed using the third Wednesday of the month for the regular board meetings with the following exceptions. July of 2025, it will be the fourth Wednesday of the month due to the summer break. And March 2026 will also be the fourth Wednesday of the month due to the student intercession break. So again, standard is the third Wednesday of the month with the exception of July 2025 and March 2026, which will be the fourth Wednesday of the month due to breaks. While we don't have a slide to display the calendar right now, upon approval, can we get it as early as tomorrow? It would be posted to the board page of the SISD website, and the board meetings will be reflected there. So this is to consider the approval of that, third Wednesday, those two exceptions. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Ms. Macias. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Thank you. Moving on, we have public hearings, 2025 through 2026. Every Student Succeeds Act Public Notice Meeting. Dr. Starkey, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Vasquez. It's not every, you know, it's like when they talk about NFL and NBA, it's like you only get drafted once, is what they tell the players and all that. Well, you only get to follow the announcement of a superintendent maybe once in your career, right? So just want to say congratulations to a great boss and a really good friend. And want to also say really quick, I didn't come up here last time, so bear with me for a second. Congratulations to our new board members and also board members who were re-elected. Good to see all of you all all together as a whole team of eight, like Dr. Inahosa said, right? Longtime resident, proud dad of a Montwood grad, dedicated employee, District Two. Your people came by my house.
It was me.
They convinced me. They, no, I was definitely convinced. You all had me at hello. I was out there watering in the corner house. Okay, so the real, okay, so now I'm up, okay, so now I'm up here. Every year, we get our, one of our very major batches of federal funding that comes from the U.S. Department of Education is, are the six programs that come from what is now called the Every Student Succeeds Act. And we have this, we always hopefully get the planning amounts on time, and we go ahead and we get everything ready for the upcoming year so we can begin the new fiscal year with this supplemental funding that we receive from the federal government. So very quickly, from U.S. Department of Education. So it started out, it's the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965. Okay, for those of you who are scoring at home, that's nine years before I was born. So it's been around, it's been around for a really long time. And they continue to have reauthorized it through the years. And the latest one was in the Obama administration, and it's now called the Every Student Succeeds Act. It's been that for about the last ten years. So the first program they ever had, for anyone that, because some of you may not have heard this before, and I don't mind at all, the first program that they, that ever existed in sixty-five, it was part of, it was LBJ who signed it, and it was part of his war on poverty. So it was meant to have the federal government help students who had economic disadvantages. So at that time, Title I Part A was born. In the last sixty years, it's expanded into quite, quite a big deal, and it's very important for all school districts, such as ours. So each year, we get certain planning amounts. So those are up there now. Okay, Title I A is always the biggest. Title I C is migrant. Title I D is delinquent services. Title II is supporting effective instruction. Title III is English language acquisition, and Title IV is student enrichment and academic support. I'm going to get into each one of those in a minute. The amount that we're hauling in this year with the application is almost nineteen point five million dollars. That is thankfully, in spite of, and I'm not going to talk politics about who votes for who and all, none of that. I would never do that in public or much less in private. But all the talk about what we were going to receive or possibly not receive, we basically held level in all programs, okay, independent of anyone's private political views. Okay, right? So the first, the first one that we're looking at is Title I, Title I Part A. It's split, split across some things pretty evenly. You've got some of your major initiatives up there, district program support, campus, instructional support, parent family engagement, it's a huge component, communities and schools, instructional programs, professional development, technology hardware initiatives. There's a lot of that all the way, all the way across with that. So it's, it covers a very wide variety. Title I C, that is migrant education, as I mentioned, that's pretty self-explanatory. The federal government unfortunately has really been decreasing this program, and you don't just see it in SISD, but you see it just about everywhere. It's, I think it's unfortunate, but we continue to use whatever carryover we might receive and whatever amounts we might receive, and we continue to take care of the migrant population that we have in this ever-increasing urbanized area that we live in now. I mean, if you live in the Upper East Side, right, you know all about that. But yeah, we take, but with them, we do have a few, and we take care of our own. This one is interesting, Title I Part D, Subpart II. The reason why we have services to neglected, delinquent, and at-risk youth is because they are actually not students who are enrolled here. They are at a place called the Schaefer House, which is a Texas Department of Juvenile Justice facility. It's right up, right up by the Sheriff's Annex there by Montana and Joe Battle. It's within our boundaries, so we have to serve the students that are there. There is actually a teacher who is employed with us who does that. We pay a partial, part of her salary comes out of the little money we receive for it. Title II Part A, my colleague Gina Exensary actually administers Title II Part A, Supporting Effective Instruction. The idea with that one, money is, funding is received to provide, basically to make more effective teachers and to make more effective instructional leaders on campus. So there's a lot of instructional support and a lot of professional development that comes with that. And then plus the fact that there's mentor programs for teachers and the UTEP internship program that Mrs. Parham and Ms. Exensary so effectively and admirably run is part of this. Okay, so it's all about improving, improving those areas. Title III Part A is English language acquisition. My colleague Joanne Anguiano, who's the Director of Bilingual Education, takes care of that. The way I like to explain this one when I do a public hearing is that we have a base general fund, right, that's basic, and then you have a particular pick code for several things, but there's one for bilingual education that's state money. This is English language acquisition for federal money. So this is like, there's the cake, then there's the icing, and then this is like going further than that with the decorations. And it's all meant, just pretty self-explanatory, it all leads towards our English language learner education, and it's meant to close those achievement gaps between that population and the rest of the population. So it all, it all goes around that, but it has to be, the reason I brought up the cake analogy is because this absolutely has to be supplemental, as does everything that we're talking about here. Okay, Title IV Part A, that's student support and academic enrichment. The administration of that is back to being charged with me, but I'm very happy to be able to partner with so many excellent people with so many initiatives that we have in that, because that's where we have funding for certain parts of our dual-language program, our early college program, our academy, some stuff with our academies, fine arts, also social emotional learning with, we've got partnerships on that with guidance and counseling with programs, and that's a, that's a big thing there. Our fine arts summer camps were really huge. I was, I was looking for some more stuff on X about that, you know, where they, our fine arts director and assistant director put on some really cool stuff, and we're really, we're happy to be able to know that that's allowable and that we can keep that going. And we're really, we're happy to be able to know that that's allowable and that we can keep that going. Okay, so at any rate, those are the six programs, just kind of in a summary there. And where the base kind of comes from, and it's a public hearing. And we do this as, as part of law. And that point, I can, I can solicit any public input that there might, or questions that there might be at this time. And presenting this, as I did, also frees me to submit the consolidated application to TEA. And we can move forward with that. And I'm going to tell you all right now that it's already ready to go and all I got to do is do this. So I'll, I'll move on with that, probably at home. Thank you.
Any questions?
Dr. Starkey, as always, thank you for all of the information. Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the entitlements that we have, are the allocations specifically to departments or are they also allocations to the campuses?
I would say, Mrs. Macias, that campus-wise, probably, I would say campus-wise, 90% of the money is going down there in terms of their allotments that go that way, the instructional programs, other support, parent liaisons, funding, CIS. The only thing that really stays up here is just the 6% for a few salaries to administer it and then the indirect cost. And pretty much after that, the rest of it's out to the schools in one, in one form or another.
I really value that information because it truly should be going down to our campuses and to our students. And with that, the needs, is it, is there a needs-based funding model to where a starting campus based on emergent bilingual or low socioeconomic status receives a little bit more or is it by student?
Because we, Mrs. Macias, because we are school-wide, which means that every campus in Socorro ISD has at least 40% economically disadvantaged in their population. The lowest is Horizon Heights right now with 57. The highest is Desert Wind with 90. Okay, that means that they all qualify. So we go per pupil allotment to get it out there. So you're going to see, some schools will haul a little less and some will haul a little more, but it's equally distributed.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Okay, this being a public hearing, is there anyone in the public who has questions or comments related to the report's contents? Okay, thank you, Dr. Starkey.
Congratulations again, Mr. Vasquez and to all of the board, the team of eight. Dr. Inahosa always says that, I never forget it.
Thank you. Continuing then, Mr. Solis, proposed 2025 through 2026 school district budget and discussion of proposed tax rate.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, members of the board, Superintendent Vasquez, and members of our community. David Solis, Chief Financial Officer for the district. This evening, we are holding the required public hearing on the budget and proposed tax rate for the 2526 fiscal year. This public hearing is intended to provide transparency and support informed decision-making for both the board and the public. This evening, we will discuss the budget development process, share key assumptions, and present a summary of the proposed budget for the upcoming year. While this is a hearing for the budget and the proposed tax rate, the board will not adopt the tax rate at this evening. That action will occur later this summer, once final certified property values are received and other legal requirements are met. Our budget process is a collaborative process that includes planning, preparation, adoption, implementation, and evaluation. It begins early in the year with data collection, campus and department planning, and projections based on enrollment, projected enrollment, and anticipated funding. This year's process also considered the impact of legislative changes, including the new state funding through House Bill II, as well as ongoing challenges such as inflation and declining enrollment. Our goal throughout this process has been to develop a responsible, student-centered budget while maintaining and providing financial stability. This timeline highlights the various board meetings that supported the development of the budget. Throughout the spring, the board has participated in budget workshops, received financial updates, and reviewed legislative developments. These meetings have provided opportunities for discussion, feedback, and adjustments as we build the proposed budget. This evening's public hearing is one of the final steps before the board considers adoption of the budget and provides an opportunity for public input and transparency. Additionally, to support this effort, printed handouts are available for everyone attending this evening's meeting. Each of you should also have a copy in front of you, which includes a summary of the key information being presented and also a QR code that links directly to the proposed budget book. As required by law, we published a public notice for this hearing in the Ocaso Times on Friday, June 13th. That same day, we also posted a summary of the proposed budget on the district's financial services website. To make things easier for the community, we created a special section on our finance website where people can find the public notice, proposed budget summary, and proposed budget book. These steps help us meet all legal requirements and make sure the public has easy access to important budget information. Under Texas law, the board must adopt a budget before any funds can be spent and before setting a tax rate. This evening, the board is being asked to consider the budget adoption for the general fund, which includes the Aquatic Center, the Child Nutrition Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. Each budget was prepared on a 12-month basis and is organized by function, meaning it reflects how funds are allocated by purpose and type of activity. This slide outlines the legal steps and key deadlines involved in adopting the district's tax rate. By law, the board must adopt a tax rate by September 30th or within 60 days of receiving the certified appraisal rule, which every date is later. However, if the board decides to adopt a rate that exceeds the voter-approved tax rate, then the district is required to call an election by August 18th. If that happens, the election will be held on November 4th, which is the uniform election date across the state. Before an election can be held, the state requires the district to complete an efficiency audit. This audit evaluates how well the district manages its finances, staffing, and use of resources. It compares our operations to similar school districts and provides the public with an objective look at how efficiently we are operating. The audit does not determine whether an election can be held, it simply must be completed and made available to the public before an election is called. To meet these requirements, the board must select an auditor no later than July 4th, which is four months before the November election. Once selected, the auditor has three months to complete the audit. After the audit is finalized, the district must hold a public meeting to discuss the findings and post the audit report at least 30 days before the election. This timeline is designed to ensure transparency and give the public time to review and understand how the district operates before any decision is made on the tax rate. Because these deadlines are quickly approaching, the board will consider an item for approval this evening related to selecting the auditor. Taking this step now ensures we remain in full compliance with state requirements in case the board decides to move forward with a VEDR later this summer. The proposed budget for the upcoming year is based on several important assumptions. First, student enrollment is expected to decline by about 772 students, bringing the total projected enrollment to 45,900 students. Since average daily attendance is what the state uses to calculate funding, we are estimating an ADA of 41,540. Next, property values are projected to increase by 13.84% based on preliminary appraisal data as of April 30th. The proposed tax rate is $1.09 of a cent per $100 of property value. That includes a maintenance and operations tax rate of .61 and 9 cents and a debt service tax rate of 39 cents. We also expect to receive about $26 million in new funding from House Bill II. However, about $18 million of that is tied to required state-mandated expenses such as teacher pay raises. That leaves roughly $8 million in flexible funding to help balance the budget. The district's revenue comes from three main sources, local revenue, which primarily comes from property tax collections, state funding, and federal funds. With the anticipated increase in state funding through House Bill II, our projected revenue is just, is enough to support a balanced budget for the upcoming year. However, it is important to note that the district must still manage its resources carefully. We are facing ongoing challenges, including declining student enrollment and rising costs due to inflation. These pressures make it critical that we continue using our funding responsibly to maintain financial stability. The proposed budget reflects the district's continued effort to balance limited funding with growing needs. Just like in previous years, the largest portion of our budget goes to instruction. This includes teacher salaries, classroom materials, and instructional support, keeping students at the center of every financial decision we make. At the same time, funding also supports other critical areas like transportation, safety, technology, and facility maintenance. These services are essential to keeping our schools running smoothly, but they are experiencing high costs due to inflation and increased demand. This slide summarizes the proposed budget across three operating, across the three operating funds. The general fund supports instruction, staffing, and daily operations. It is balanced using additional revenue from House Bill II. But achieving that balance required thoughtful planning and difficult decisions due to rising costs and declining enrollment. The Child Nutrition Fund is self-sustaining, funded through student participation and federal reimbursements. And the Debt Service Fund is funded primarily through debt service tax rate and is used to make our scheduled debt service payment. You will notice that there is a surplus of about $7 million noted in the Debt Service Fund. What's included in our current budget is another defecence for the upcoming year. So although the general fund is balanced, the district still faces several serious challenges, including inflation, aging buildings, deferred maintenance needs, and the replacement of student vices that were purchased during the pandemic and are now nearing the end of their useful life. One of the most urgent financial concerns is improving the district's cash flow and rebuilding its general fund fund balance. Tackling this will require the district to look for new sources of revenue and continue making thoughtful and sometimes difficult decisions that improve and protect our long-term financial stability. Overall, this budget represents a careful balance of priorities and shows our ongoing commitment to responsible, student-focused financial planning. Preliminary property values were released on April 30th and show a 13.84 increase, which is about $2.25 billion more than last year's certified values. However, these early numbers do not reflect the impact of recent legislative changes, including the new increased exemption for homeowners, seniors, and businesses. Once those exemptions are applied, we expect the final property values to decrease. Final certified values are expected by July 25th. These updated figures, along with the compressed tax rate from the Texas Education Agency and the effects of new exemptions, will determine the final rate, which will be adopted later this summer. This slide explains what the proposed tax rate would mean for the average homeowner. Even though property values have gone up, the proposed tax rate of $1.09, that's per $100 of value is actually lower than last year's rate because of continued tax rate compression. However, due to the increase in appraised property values, some owners, some homeowners may still see a small increase in their total tax bill. It's important to remember that this is only a proposed rate. The final rate will be adopted later this summer, once all required property values and notices have been received and reviewed. At this time, I welcome any questions or comments from the board. Since this is a public hearing, I also welcome input from the members of the community.
Questions?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, yes, I have to give a disclosure. I do consult with the firm that is being recommended to do the efficiency study, Moak Casey. But I have not been involved in any deliberations with staff at all during this process. And even though I can overturn any decision that the board makes here, I will have to recuse myself from participation in later when you have on the consent agenda, the vote for the firm for the efficiency study. So I just needed to put that on the record.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. Questions?
Yes, just so that we could, just for clarity, I know that you mentioned that there is an approved tax exemption in this 2025 legislative session. It was from $100,000 to $140,000, is that correct?
So that's, so it was approved, but it still requires voter approval in November. So the first one involves the homestead exemption from $100,000 to $140,000. There's also another exemption that increases the exemption for seniors and residents with disabilities. And that's going to also increase from $10,000 to $60,000. There's also the personal business tax exemption that's going to increase from $1,200 to $125,000. So those are the things that were still pending, and they all require voter approval.
They require voter approval. So that's important for everybody to know that if they would like those exemptions, which I'm sure everybody does, they, they should go out to vote to make sure that that is in play.
Correct.
Sorry, Ms. Macias. Did you say the personal business exemption, $1,200 to $125,000?
Correct, it's $1,250, I believe, to, to $125,000.
Okay, sorry.
$2,500 to $125,000.
Okay.
So with that, the other clarification that I would, I know that you mentioned it, is that even though property taxes might, no, sorry, not, property values increase, the exemption might increase also. However, does the district get more money with that information? Or how does that look like for SISD? Are we going to get, are we going to rake it in? Because now we have more money coming our way.
So with the exemptions, it would create less local revenue for the district. However, the state does, they did have a hold harmless provision in the, in the legislation. So we would get additional state aid as part of the hold harmless provision.
Is the hold harmless one-for-one or does the district usually lose money?
I've never been able to calculate that it's been one-for-one exactly, because it is a rather complex calculation. But there is a hold harmless provision. I don't believe it's one-for-one, but there is a provision in there.
One other question, defecence. I know that we've been dealing with that word for a couple of years. It helps us pay down our debt. What is the benefit of having that and would it help our, I know that we might be going out for a VEDR. What, are we going to continue the defecence or is that something that you'll bring to us in the future?
So the defecence is on the debt service side, whereas the VEDR affects the MNO tax rate. So the VEDR would specifically address the MNO tax rate and increasing that portion of our tax rate. The defecence, the benefit is that we're able to pay off debt early, which also builds capacity in case we have future needs across the district, especially large capital improvements. As I mentioned before, we do have aging facilities. So by paying off debt early, there is a savings on the back end, but it also builds that capacity for us to be able to go out and secure additional debt.
It's two different things, the INS and the maintenance and operations.
Correct.
Kim?
The only thing, Ms. Macias, I would like to add to that is that on the, the new legislation with Senate Bill Four with the defecence, the board is now required to have 60% vote towards a defecence, so it means four of the votes. So what that does is it keeps your tax rate on the INS side a little higher instead of the lower rate. And then you use the additional tax rate revenue to pay down your debt structures. But you know, to do that, now I take 60% vote, which means four votes. You know, to do that, they put a little sort of, sort of measure to sort of counter the situation there in the session coming up. That's the only caveat to this, this one that's coming up in the defecence.
My questions.
Any additional questions? Mr. Solis, in September is when we expect the certified property values from the Central Appraisal District, correct?
July 25th. They have to provide us the certified property values by July 25th.
By July 25th?
The board is required to adopt a tax rate no later than September 30th or 60 days after approving, or receiving the appraisal rules, certified appraisal rules.
Okay, thank you. No other questions from the board? Again, anything else, Mr. Solis? No? This, like the previous one, this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment or have questions about the proposed budget and/or tax rate?
Board President, Mr. Nahara, congratulations, Mr. Vasquez. I'm so happy the board selected you. A year ago, when I was here listening to last year's budget presentation, it was more dark and gloomy because there was a budget deficit and it looked like the district wasn't a very bad spot. And for, in one year, to come around to see a balanced budget, that's tremendous. Because what it shows is there's light at the end of the tunnel. And as that light begins to expand, we're going to come to this place where that budget is going to go from a place of black to, to a place of green, where the district will grow and prosper. So I'm very excited by this balanced budget that has been worked so hard. I know so many in the district have had to sacrifice. There have been teachers who've unfortunately had to be laid off. But I think all the right decisions have been made, so congra- So congratulations as a taxpayer. I'm very excited for what's going to happen in the future for the district.
Anyone else? Okay, then that closes the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Solis. Continuing then, we've got district reports. District-wide intruder detection, audit report findings. Mr. Solis, please.
Paul Solis. Paul Solis. Mr. David Solis, intruder findings, please.
That would be Solis squared, right? Good evening, Superintendent Vazquez. Congratulations, sir. President Nahara, members of the board, my name is Paul Solis. I'm the Assistant Director of Emergency Management. An intruder detection audit was conducted in the district by Region 19 Education Services Center. The findings will be shared with the district's School Safety and Security Committee in July and the Board of Trustees. A plan of action is in place and will be shared with the trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Senior summary presentation. Ms. McCaven, please. Mr. Solis, just kidding.
Good evening, President Nahara, Superintendent Mr. Vazquez, congratulations, and members of the board, Tammy McCaven, the Director of School Counseling. And this evening, we're here to present our senior summary. And this evening, Monica Dominguez, our Coordinator of School Counseling, will be doing that presentation for you.
Good evening, President Nahara, Superintendent Vazquez, congratulations, and members of the board. My name is Monica Dominguez. I'm one of the coordinators for the School Counseling Department. And as our ongoing commitment to student success, I am excited to present to you the senior summary for this evening with three focuses, post-secondary education funding, FAFSA, and graduation. On this slide, you have our post-secondary education funding report, which we also call PSEF. This report is not state mandated. This report came about about 25 years ago. The El Paso Directors of School Counseling created some guidelines here in Region 19 to report post-secondary education funding. This, these guidelines are reviewed and revised yearly. In order to get on this report and to account for funding, a student must apply for college, university, or the military, be accepted, and be awarded. And so when the student applies for college or university or military, they, when they receive their award letter, they are giving that award letter to the GO Center Specialist or the School Counselor, and they will report this on the PSEF report into our portal in Skyward. So to kind of give you an example of what that looks like, if I'm a student here in SISD and I apply for three Texas schools, three universities, we always encourage our students to apply for their dream school, their reach school, and their safe school. So if I was a student here in SISD and I applied for my dream school, which is UT Austin, I apply, I get accepted, and UT Austin awards me $50,000. I apply for my reach school. I apply for Texas Tech. I know I can get in. I get accepted. They award me $30,000. And then I apply for my safe school, which is UTEP. Not because it's a bad school, it's a great school, but it has 100% admission rate. So I apply for UTEP. I get accepted, I get $10,000. That totals up to $90,000. So on this report, you will see my name, Monica Dominguez, $90,000 on this report. But in the end, I might choose UTEP to go to school. It's close to home. I'm saving some money, but I'm only using 10,000 of that funding. So I just kind of wanted to give you an example as we look at the reports as we go forward. So the first report that you will see, we're going to be doing a comparison from 2023 to 2025. And on that first report, this is from '22 to '23, and you see our high school campuses there. In the high school totals, we have 58.8 million accounted for. Then we move on to '23, '24, and we had an increase of 65 million. Then we head to this school year, '24, '25, which we had a huge increase of 72.6 million. So just kind of some numbers looking at our post-secondary education funding. On our next slide, you will see our FAFSA completions. And FAFSA stands for Free Application of Federal Student Aid. And the report you see here is as of April 30th, 2025. This is the most updated report. We received our report from TechSCAN, and they are about two months behind. So this is the most updated number, report that we have. So about three years ago, the state did mandate that students require the completion of FAFSA. And so you will see our numbers here for all of our high school campuses. And we should see an increase, of course, as the cycle ends in June 30th, we'll see an increase in those numbers. And then lastly, our graduations report. This is for the class of 2023. The state is behind about two years. So this is the most recent number that we have. Socorro ISD at 91.1% above the region and the state. And we did just get some information just recently this week from Ms. Kelly McBane, that she did report that our graduation for 2024, it's not on our PowerPoint because we just got that information, is at a 92.7. So an increase from 2023. And then I'm happy to report to you also that this year, our class of 2025 consisted of 3,662 graduates. And we do have students still completing graduation requirements, and as long as they get that done by August 31st, they will be included in this 2025 cohort, and we should see that number increase. And that is our presentation. If you have any questions, me or Ms. McCaven can answer.
Questions?
Congratulations, this is awesome. What do you attribute that 1.6% growth from a 91.1 graduation rate to a 92.7? That's amazing.
Definitely, I attribute to everything that our teachers, our counselors, just really working with those kids, our counselors meeting with those kids, having those senior meetings, making sure that they have all the requirements to graduate.
Write all those downs because that's, you know, that's the blueprint to success, and we want to continue to replicate that every year. So congratulations.
Absolutely, thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think to piggyback off of what Ms. Masias just asked, I think the counselors as well have incredible relationships with their students. They know them very, very well, and they hunt their students down in a good way. By that, I mean they do, they go above and beyond and make sure that they do have what they need, and they make sure that they find a way to accomplish what they need in order to graduate. And students walk across that stage, and I don't know if you all have noticed, but when their counselors are up there, they just, they light up because it's such a beautiful relationship. So kudos to the counseling team because it's not an easy task. It's a huge responsibility, and they do it with such grace, and they do it because they love their kids. And one number that I really would like to see is how many we had that graduated not only with the high school diploma, but also with their associates. I think that's a number that we need to celebrate as well because it's huge. It's an amazing blessing for the parents and for the students as well. So I would like to find out how much we, how many students we had.
Thank you, Ms. Karayama.
Thank you.
Okay. And so Dr. Thomas will be reporting that to you at the next meeting, I believe. So we'll get to that information. But thank you so much for honoring our counselors with those words.
If I recall correctly, the number of students was 449, am I? Those who graduated with their associates.
Awesome. Man, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Mr. Vazquez.
Thank you. So incredible numbers, by the way. One of the things that comes to mind for me, I know that there's a lot of changes that are coming down from the Department of Education, and those changes seem to be happening very frequently, a lot of uncertainty around that. You know, in preparation for that, for the upcoming school year and the ones after that as well, what adjustments are being made, if any? And it's okay if there isn't any because this is, these are just really new waters for everyone. What preparations are being made, you know, to make sure that these numbers are being met for the upcoming school year, that they're exceeded? If you can share that, if there's anything that you can add?
Okay, yes. We're going to continue working for student success, keep on meeting with our teams, our school counselors, to make sure that we continue just an upward growth, to make sure that student success is there for them. And so we'll continue to meet, and in any changes, we'll just keep working with them.
Okay, thank you.
Question. So one of the slides you showed was FAFSA completions as of April 30th, and then you mentioned that final numbers would be available at the end of this month?
So they are two months behind, and the cycle ends June 30th.
Okay, so July.
Probably by September, the end of September.
So can you make sure that we see those final FAFSA numbers with, you know, as the year closes out? And I'd also love to see a comparison to last year to make sure that, you know, we're moving in the right direction, only because, you know, and I don't know, but they're not at 100% right now, which is what piques my curiosity. That's it.
Absolutely, we'll get to that information.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
I would just say I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that Tammy McCaven is retiring after 37 years of service.
You're amazing.
Lock the doors.
Thank you, Mr. Vazquez, and thanks, everyone. It's been wonderful, a wonderful 38 years. My kids graduated from here. I'm a taxpayer. I live in this community. The best, the best. I think we have a great board here, and I'm really excited to see what Jeff Reeder brings for the district.
Was it 37 or 38? My bad.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're already glowing, my friend.
Okay, moving on, moving on then to 8C, Special Education Presentation on Transition and Program Redesign. We do have one speaker signed up. Mr. Philip Thomas Lane, please.
Board President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Vazquez. I'm a resident of District Five, and I've presented to the board many times. And before I retired, I would even present in my role as Transition Services Coordinator. It was my pleasure to serve as Transition Services Coordinator for 15 years. And prior to that time, I spent the rest of my time in special education classrooms here in Socorro ISD. Last month, when I was here, I heard a lot of concerns brought up by parents regarding transition services and some changes to units. And one of the thoughts that I had was all of the classrooms that I taught in as a special education teacher in the 90s and 2000s, well, none of those are in use anymore by the district or any districts because times have changed, educational practices have improved. And so change to classroom designs and units are something that I've come to expect as an educator. And it also made me think of one particular experience I had at America's High School when I taught in the self-contained academic classroom. Had a student transfer in mid-year, and that student had previously been served in a life skills unit at his other high school. We didn't have a life skills unit that year at America's High School, but the next year, we knew we were going to get one. And so the question that was asked of me was, could I teach this student to keep them from having to move to another campus? And I never thought, no, I'm not going to do that because I teach the self-contained academic classroom, and I don't do life skills. My only concern was, let me take a look at the goals and the objectives, and can I implement those? And it didn't take me long to figure out that, yeah, I can absolutely implement those goals and objectives. And then the next year, when we had a life skills unit, I was asked as a courtesy, hey, I want that student moved over to the life skills unit. And I told the staff, I didn't see any need for that because I was able to implement the goals and the objectives, and the student had made so many friends in class, it would be more of a disservice to the student. So there's a lot of similarity between the kinds of units that the district has, and it really comes down to the teachers. And what I'm confident of is that with the changes coming to pass in FLS, your teachers are going to be able to implement those goals, and the students will continue to be successful in the unit. And the bonus for them is more of them are going to be able to be taught at campuses close to their home, which means their friends in their neighborhood are going to likely go to the very same school they attend. And that's going to benefit them in the social setting because they're going to be more known to their friends. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Soli Vares.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Vazquez. Congratulations. I'm presenting to you tonight on the changes in the structure of some of our programs, as well as transition and graduation. The program redesign will affect these classrooms, the Early Childhood Special Education, Functional Living Skills, and Practical Academic Skills classes, and the ACCESS class, which is an acronym for Acquiring Classroom Curriculum Through Environmental Strategies for Success. The redesign of the Early Childhood Special Education classes will not eliminate any preschool program for children with disabilities. IDA law requires school districts to provide a continuum of services for students ranging from general education to self-contained settings to hospital class or even homebound services, which are the most restrictive setting. The program, the preschool program for children disability, with disabilities will continue, but the Early Childhood Special Ed, which encompasses all children between the ages of three through five in special education, will have a redesign in the Kinder and Pre-Kinder Collaborative Programs. That redesign is simply that we will no longer be sending students from their home campus to another campus to get that service. Instead, they can be provided with part of the continuum, which is specialized support or general education services with supports within their own home campuses. So this really does help the least restrictive environment for students. It keeps them at their home campuses, less movement for students, and less travel time for students on their school buses. The adjustment to the student-to-staff ratios was made. We ensured that when we went to staffing with Human Resources and all the principals in February, that we did account for these changes, making sure that we provided enough staff members to provide the services that were going to be increasing for the students in the Early Childhood Special Ed programs at their campuses. The next slide shows you the redesign of functional, the Functional Living Skills and Practical Academic Skills classes. These classes, again, fall within the continuum of services. They're both self-contained settings. IDA law requires us to have self-contained settings because some of our students require it. We ourselves at SISD made a program called the Practical Academic Skills Class and Functional Living Skills Classroom. By combining them at the elementary and middle school level, we will be able to offer students with more campuses that offer the services that they need. If you'll see the chart at the bottom, currently this year, we had only three middle school campuses that offered Functional Living Skills class, and we had five elementary school campuses that offered that. For example, one of our campuses was at the elementary level, was at Anas Los Seda Elementary School. The next closest to that one is Ben Arbyth. And then the next closest to that one would be either Helen Ball or Beneath the Martinez. With the redesign, by combining the classes, we now have 13 campuses across the district that will be able to provide these services for students. And that 13, in those 13 campuses, that will give us 19. that will give us 19 classrooms to provide these services for students. So, what this means for them is that they'll be able to get their same life skills because both classes pass in FLS, teach life skills, they'll be able to get their academic services because both classrooms teach academic curriculum. They'll both get the same curriculum because in those classes, we provide alternative curriculum as required by their IEP, it's the same curriculum in either setting. There'll be less changes of placements and less campus changes, less travel on the school bus for the students, as I mentioned. If there's no placement left at, at Ben Arbyth, they've got to go all the way out to Sedna or the other way to Helen Ball or Benito. They are staffed appropriately, they will be staffed appropriately at staffing in February. We allotted for the same student to teacher ratio in these combo classes as we did for the FLS classroom. So, the ratio for our past classroom is a one to five, one adult to five students, and the FLS, it's one adult to three. So, in these combination classrooms, the ratio will continue to be one to three. The access program, there's not a significant change to the access program other than the location. We had three access classrooms in the district for elementary, and this is just for elementary, middle school and high school stayed as is. The access program served 27 students, 26 students in the district at three different campuses. We have now combined it into one campus at O'Shea Callaher, and O'Shea is a perfect campus for that because they have room for growth, they have room for our students if they need the program. The, O'Shea and its design builds a solid foundation for social emotional learning. Every single classroom has the, I'm sorry, lost my words. They have the calming corner, I'm so sorry. Uh, yes, they have calming corners in every single classroom, and that just aligns very closely with what we need for the access students. But in addition to that, with this redesign, campuses relooked to see if they could actually serve the students at the campus where they're at instead of sending them to another campus. So, I'm very hopeful that as we're moving into next school year, this helps us to provide the social skills that the students need at their own campuses versus sending them to another campus and, and make it more restrictive. As far as transition services in SISD, we do offer services to students with disabilities to prepare them for life after high school. The individualized transition planning begins by the time they are 14 years of age and it's incorporated into their IEP. Students may graduate under the regular plan, if that's their, if that's the, the graduation plan they have, or if they need to graduate with the IEP. We must ensure that students receive their graduation requirements, their IEP services, and are ready for employment, have employment, or have access to agencies. If students, if we're not able to provide those for students and they do have the right to stay until they're 22 years old in our programs. This is a slide just to show you that we do, did offer transition nights for parents in the district. This is an example, or this is what we offered this previous school year. On going into the next school year, we'll offer something similar, three sessions in the fall and three in the spring, covering different topics. But more importantly, high school principals, high school administrators and teachers have voiced that they would like to host some of these transition nights at their own campuses versus in one central location so that we can get more participation from the parents that, of that, of those students. So, that's something that we're going to be moving forward to next school year. Out of all of these, I want to just pinpoint Project Hire. Project Hire came and presented to our parents. Project Hire is an innovative program that is a certification program at El Paso Community College. It's a two, usually a two-year certification program, and it provides the students with supported, supported education so that they can get that certification and be employed after that. Project Hire usually has about seven to 10 spots available each year for the region. This school year, they actually had 12 spots available and SISD was able to place nine of our students in those, in those programs. The other transitions programs we have, of course, we provide on-campus supports for students that are not able yet to go work out or do internships out in the community. That could be anything from on-the-job training in the cafeteria, in the gym, front office, library, things like that. The Community Access Program is something that we have in the, in our transition program at the district. Community Access is for students who've already completed their high school credits, but yet they need additional support in order to, for self-help skills or for employability skills. The CAT program takes students around the community, they utilize services from the El Paso Public Library, Sun Metro, Texas Workforce Commission, they go to different job sites throughout the, throughout the community that our job coaches and VAC teachers obtain. And so, we do have, I, we do have several and we're expanding into next year, but the, the point of this is that it is an internship-style program where they get the skills and they're expected to perform just like any other employee in those programs. The vocational adjustment classes for students who, to gain actual job experience while they're in high school, we do provide job-related academic instruction to them, but these students are actually employed either part-time or full-time. And then the final program that I want to talk to you about is Project Search, and we're very proud of this collaboration with Project Search and the Hospitals of Providence East. We've been collaborating with them since the fall of 2019. It is a one-school-year internship that students are in, up to 10 participants per year selected, and it's a comprehensive process. It includes interviews and involves input from community partners, not just SISD staff. So, it goes, they go through an entire interview process. Once students complete that program, they are, they have all the employability skills that they need, they've gone through rotations at the hospital, different internships, and I want to highlight that the national employment rate for students with disabilities is approximately 22.7%, I'm sorry, not students, individuals with disabilities. The, it's 22.7% is the national employment rate. For SISD, this marks the sixth year of our program. With three cohorts achieving a 100% employment rate, two cohorts reached 70% employment. The most recent cohort reached an 80% employment rate and actually will be recognized at the Project Search Conference and receiving an exceptional outcome award for, for reaching That's my presentation, any questions?
You know I gotta talk. So, I do want to commend Special Ed. I think the changes, change is hard and so, it's, we're scared. Everybody is a little bit afraid, but from the perspective of, as a parent, I can tell you that I love the fact that the FLS and the PASS will be together. My son could have so used it. He was in between both. And because we had to move him from school to school because the units were not at his home school, he's a twin, so his twin sister then had to go with him, and so, they, they moved constantly. And so, it was very hard for them to, to root themselves at any one campus. I think this is an amazing opportunity. Again, I know that change is, is scary and we don't know what to expect, but I'm very hopeful that it's going to meet the needs of the teachers, but more importantly, our students. I, I really think that we will see success and, and our kids are going to blossom. I mean, they already do, our teachers do an amazing job. And the other thing that, that I wanted to say is that my son is a Project Search product. He's third year employed and he went through Project Search and he's a success story. They, they taught him, boy, did they teach him employment skills and interview skills and he's been able to hold a job for three years and that's amazing. I never thought that I would see that and, shame on me, right? But thank you to Socorro because they were tough on him when they needed to be and they taught him everything that they did. So, Special Ed is, is doing amazing and beautiful things for our kids. So, thank you so much and thank you for constantly changing and, and meeting the needs, the changing needs of our kids and, and our community. And I just, I applaud you and I'm eternally grateful and indebted to, to the teachers of our district because they have made my life amazing and my son's life. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordea.
Just one, Mr. Nahara.
Yes, sir.
Well, first, two congratulations because, one, that employment rate is amazing, I love to hear it. The second one, I'm a big fan of decentralization, so having more students be able to stay at their home campuses, both with the FLS and PASS, but then also having those transition nights at home campuses, I think is great. Decentralization has a tendency to draw more people out and I really appreciate that. My only question with that is, is transportation prepared to handle the different route changes? Any monitors, any bus drivers? Have we worked with them to make sure that that's a smooth transition as we go into this next school year? Help, help educate me on that.
So, every year, transition or the transportation is, is a huge beast for us. We start working with that as soon as we start seeing where the students are going to be going because it does, it involves a lot of work. The transportation needs that to, to plan out their routes and we need that to make sure that we have the spaces available for students. So, we've been working with transportation on, year after year, we work on the same thing. So, they get all of our information early on, they already have all of that information they've been working on so that they can, they can do those routes. Now, I don't have the information as to whether or not it's going to involve needing more staff for them, but I do know that they work on the, on the routes as early as June.
Mr. Vazquez, if we can, just so we minimize impact during this transition, if there's anything that we identify early on, please just let us know so we can try to help get over those hurdles. Absolutely. Because it sounds like there's going to be a lot of changes in the upcoming, upcoming school year and we'd hate for a missed route or a missed pickup to be one of those hurdles. Absolutely, we'll keep you apprised of any changes. Thank you, sir.
I think I can clarify a little bit. So, there will be, we tried to minimize the changes as much, much as possible. Now that we have so many different campuses offering those programs, it's possible that some parents might want their students to attend their home school now that the home school has the, the program there. However, if the student was in fourth or fifth grade, we really tried not to move them. They've been at their campus for already three, three or four years. We would hate to uproot them and send them to another campus just because it's there at their home. Now, if the parent wanted that, we did that. So, I know you're, you're anticipating lots of movement going on, but we really tried to minimize that. There were some changes that had to be made with students going to other campuses, but we really tried to minimize it.
That's awesome and I just, I know that logistics planning is a little bit different than the operational planning and so, I didn't want to get, you know, something that's, is seemingly easy that gets overlooked, that could cause a big hiccup. So, I just want to make sure that was smooth.
Of course.
Thank you.
Ms. Solivares, I have one question. First and foremost, thank you to you and to the work that your team does to serve our most vulnerable students. You know, that was, you know, for me, very important throughout the process of, of the election, making sure that we talked to folks and, and let them know that as changes were being forecasted, as adjustments were being made, for me, it's very important that not one of those students falls through the cracks, right? And I think that that's the priority of, of you and your team and of everybody here in this room. And so, I think, I, I, I ask this, and maybe it's a question for Mr. Vazquez too, but I constantly remember a conversation that I had with a former SISD parent who had special needs kids in the district, didn't have a, a really great experience, like was never really able to figure out what that was and, you know, that, you know, that was up to her and, you know, maybe she didn't feel comfortable sharing. But I think something important to note is that as these changes do take place, it's important for us to obtain feedback from parents to see if there's any areas of improvement. And I think that that's, I know that that's something that's already probably taking place right now, but with these adjustments, with these, you know, new changes, I think that that's, that's critical, just to make sure that, that we can identify those areas. And no one better to, to share that with us than, than the parents, right? Than, than the, than the guardians of, of these folks. So, is that something that can maybe be implemented?
Certainly, and we did have some parent meetings this previous school year where we did discuss some of those changes with parents. I've also met with individual parents myself.
Okay.
To go over the particular changes for their students, other possible changes for their students. The, as soon as we were aware that we were going to make some of these changes, I did have a meeting with my related staff so that they could have those conversations with parents, so one-on-one, either through ARD meetings or sometimes the, some of the principals met with the parents in a meeting outside of an AR to discuss some of those changes. So, some of those things happened. The feedback that I've received is individual from some of those parents that have attended meetings with me.
Okay, good. And I think just for me, the, what I'm wanting to get at is it being documented. And I think that's really important. Sometimes having that in writing is, is concrete and it, and it helps, I think, just to better understand where, where a parent may be coming from.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solivares.
Thank you.
Okay, we continue then with 8D, TA Conservative Executive Summary Report. Dr. Nahara and Mr. Kim, please.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, congratulations. I'm David Solis. He keeps getting promotions, he doesn't even, he got his budget approved yet. But here, I'm here to report on our monthly report. We have item number one is the exit criteria, the exit ticket, the exit strategy. And you can almost check this one off. Your big goal here was to complete your search for your superintendent. Now, you got to negotiate his contract in 21 days so that he can officially sign to be your superintendent. There are some next steps though, and that's the entry plan because he's been the wannabe superintendent, now he's the superintendent. And just like any principal will tell you, they thought they knew everything when they were the assistant principal until they became the, the principal. He's been sitting in the chair, but now it's different. And so, there are some things that, and he's pretty coachable, and there are some things that we'll work with him on a very organic entry plan that, once the official vote takes place in a few weeks, that he will have to execute. Also, the board has, need to go through that process and I was on the Lone Star Governance Training for board members, that's the next big step. I know you're in communication with Mr. Mackey about how to make that happen. But I also saw some things today that gave me a glimmer of hope. I used to chew on him because we never talked about student achievement. And now that when you get your goals, you'll be talking about student achievement. And I always saw you, Mr. President, you were noticing stuff about the FAFSA and what was there and what was good and what was missing. But see, those can become goals that now you can drive through the superintendent, and please don't call them board goals, these are district goals. Because you want the district not to buy in, you want the district to own them and it has to be district goals. But I can see how that can now cascade to the senior team and down to the principals. And so, even as good as your performance is, you can make it better. But good things happen by design, not by accident. And you, you get the opportunity to design these goals in the next three months, so that's the next critical step. And by the way, you don't need to have a subjective superintendent's evaluation instrument. You need to have an objective superintendent's evaluation instrument, and we will help you craft that over the next several months. So, Mr. Kim, if you'll include that at the next steps, under that is how we get to an obj, because it will take you a year to design it, but you have to have a baseline year and you can get all the data you need, and it'll be driven off your goals and other things that are important to Team Socorro. So, we got, we checked most of the box, but it's not quite at exit level. Exit criteria two, you've taken some tough calls, some tough votes on the reduction in force. You've appointed a stellar task force on school finance because you know the job's only partially done. And command decisions are easy to make and hard to implement. Consensus decisions are messy, they take a long time, but implementation is much faster and deeper if you utilize this committee or this task force appropriately. You've done it well so far, but now you've got some other tests coming as soon as your next quarter about what this committee reviewed. about what this committee reviews. But remember, you can't hold the committee accountable. And you give them a charge and their advisory, but in the end, you know, you and the superintendent are accountable. So we will start figuring that out. Now we have some clarity with the session being over. And so now we can do some planning, at least for a couple of years. And I think very few educational issues are going to take place in the special session. So I think now your finance team and your academic team can start charging forward with some specific plans on best practices, procedures. We're going to also have some other opportunities. Next steps is monitoring expenditures. You don't know what you don't know. They think you're going to lose 700 students. He thinks you're going to lose 1,000 students. You won't really know till they show up. You can have all of these receptions and all these things and all these events, but the birth rates are declining. You graduated X amount of seniors, and your kindergarten class is a lot smaller. And this summer, we're going to host that event at sometime in July before the school year starts with some regional demographic data. But you still won't know. I used to have a spreadsheet for the first day enrollment, and I kept this for 15 years. Then the second day enrollment, and you still don't know anything till about the seventh day of enrollment about what your numbers are going to look like. And you have to study those things. And then the one thing you do have control over is what you spend. So you have your adopted budget, but you will amend that budget multiple times. So be careful on your expenditures because you don't want to go back to what you had to go through this year. And so you have the opportunity to make some courageous decisions depending on the data that you have as you get your enrollment. And your attendance is also important. And so, and then of course, we heard it tonight. You're going to hear it for the next three months about your health care program. And it's been a multimillion-dollar drain on your budget the last several years. And it's coming again. So while you think, you know, you've made a lot of huge progress, you've got that big liability sitting out there. And so it's going to take input from your committee, your task force, from your employees. And you've got to exert fiscal responsibility. Some of you got elected because of your fiscal knowledge. And so now everybody's watching about how disciplined, disciplined people with disciplined thought, taking disciplined action can solve almost anything. But it's going to take some courage, and it's going to take some discipline, especially on this. But you got some help. You got some help with your task force, and I think that you're taking that task force seriously, and they're taking it seriously. So that's the good news. I'll have Mr. Kim come back and present on some continuous improvement processes, and then I'll be back for the final exit ticket.
Good evening, board members. Once again, congratulations, Mr. Vasquez. Just so that we can get our work done less than a year and a half, Mr. Woodcraft, we want to just, once again, speed up some of our processes. One of the large tranche of issues that has brought the conservatives to the Socorro Independent School District course was a twofold issue, board governance issues and then processes issues, especially related to graduation credit monitoring of those effects. By and large, certainly, the board governance issue is still ongoing as Dr. Nohosa just mentioned about the LSG training and so forth. Certainly, all of you have done a great job as a new board here in making headways in terms of that. Certainly, the staff has done a tremendous amount of work in the large tranche of work, especially when it comes to the graduation and credit requirements. Talking with, I had like Hernandez, as well as her staff, and Carlos Scara, they've done a great job monitoring those. I know that the 25, 26 school year, 24, 25 school year reports have been all certified and ready to go. So I think you're in good hands there. However, we want to institutionalize that process. Soon enough, in the next few months, the staff will bring you a manual that the board needs to adopt that codifies that process. So that process lives on beyond the conservators, if you will. So it's not something that they do as a result of verbal agreements, but rather it's codified and the board actually adopts that to become sort of the law, the land, sort of speaking, the Socorro Independent School District. So that's coming forward. The other tranche of work that I think will certainly help, especially with the specification, certainly early intervention work is what's known as the multi-tier support system. That's still in development, and so we'll bring you more information about that. Once again, I would ask that the board, once again, in the near future, adopt that particular codified process. So it belongs to the board, it belongs to the whole entire staff. And going forward, if there's any issues with that, you alter the process. Not necessarily the people around that, or certainly not the students. So once again, that will be brought to you at a future event. So once again, there's a great deal of other tranche of processes involved in it. But these are the two main ones that are part of the exit criteria for the conservators, hopefully within less than a year and a half. All right, thank you.
So now the bad news. First of all, the good news on the first one. Exit criteria one, I would say A minus. Exit criteria two, B plus. Exit criteria three, A minus. Exit criteria four, the reason I wore a blue tie is because I'm blue in the face talking about customer service, and I haven't seen anything from the staff. And this is year two, and if y'all want us gone, I think y'all want us gone. We got to get to this one. And customer service is not going to happen overnight. It took me since 1995 to work on this, and I didn't get it right until 2019. And it's, and customer service is about everything. And it's how principals feel about central office, but it's also how your parents feel about an interaction with the school secretary. It's comprehensive, and I haven't seen much movement. I know we've had some big rocks to move, and we've moved those boulders. But the mountains over there on the west side of El Paso, there are no mountains over here. So we've got some work to do. And you know what? You're not going to have, I'm not going to have any good news for you next month because it's 4th of July, you got to get your superintendent hired, and you know, summer, July slows down stuff. And so you're not going to see a lot of progress until probably September or October. But I'm going to keep pushing until, and this happens to be something that I studied dearly. And it is now important to every school district. Because if you don't take care of, first, your primary customers are your students. Your secondary customers are your staff. But everybody, your board, your staff, and your community has to make sure that you're bought into customer service, not even buy it, buy in, that you own it. And I'm confident we can get there, but we're, this is like a, did you say MTSS? Yeah, we might need a MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, intervention for our customer service plan, because it's not quite ready. So y'all need to probe on this one in the coming months. But I'm very confident we'll come up with something. But don't expect a miracle overnight. Because you got to develop the system, you got to train for the system, you got to measure the system until you finally start getting the results for the system. And so that's the one thing, the one cautionary note that I have this evening. But you know, you'll be able to get some feedback from us as we go. So at that point, I'll stop, Mr. President, and see if you or any of the board members have any questions for us.
Questions?
I do. When you, you talked about the customer service model. Personally, I like to call it constituent services just because I think that that adds more of a personal touch, and it serves, I mean, it's, we do serve our constituency. But I am interested in kind of learning, if you can elaborate a little bit about, you know, what successes you had. You mentioned that you started implementing this and developing it in 1995. And I'm just really interested in, if you could share some of that insight with us and what came out of it.
Yeah, very quickly. I went, I had the, when I was Region 19 Service Center Director, I had the opportunity to go to the Harvard Business School Strategic Perspectives for Nonprofit Management. And you know, they teach the case study method. And they taught three case studies during that seminar. One was on the broken window theory about how New York reduced crime. Mayor Giuliani took the credit, but actually it was Chief Bratton who completely reduced crime in New York by fixing all the windows, fixing the little stuff, and then the big stuff took care of itself. We also, the second case study was Scandinavian Airlines, and they had a customer service model. And it was the core four, focus on student achievement, fast in the delivery of products and services, flexible in the delivery of products and services, and friendly. I'm here from the government, I'm here to help you. How do you deliver those? So I took that model, and I adapted it to public ed. And I took it with me to Hays, to Spring, to Dallas. And it wasn't until my second term in Dallas that we were actually able to measure the core four. And then there are now tools available that can give you data. And you know, so then I would share with my senior staff, this is what the principal's saying about your customer service with them on staffing. Are you getting school staffed quickly? And then later, so we first started with principals, but later we expanded it. And we got every, just like there are now tools. You get in Uber, why is Uber so safe? We are always taught, don't get in a car with a stranger, yet we're all getting in a car with a stranger because it's all designed to make sure that you're safe. If an Uber driver gets off the recommended path, they get chewed out. And you rate them every time you get out. There's a way you can rate every phone call from your special ed parent to the special ed office. And you can have a number that gives you, on a Likert scale of one to five, what that experience was like. And so there are, there are things that can make this work. And you don't have to reinvent the wheel. First of all, you have to have a model. Once you got your model, then you have to measure it. Because you measure what you treasure, and this can, this can happen. We're just a little bit behind on it. So those are some of the kinds of examples that it can be very comprehensive. It's going to cost you a little bit of money, but it's going to bring you a lot of money. Because if you now, if people start, you're back as the destination district, and people start flocking to your district like they did in the past, even though there are less people in the county, you can increase your market share. Dallas went from a culture, we had five superintendents in five years in the 1990s when I was here, and one went to federal prison. And then I was superintendent for 13 years, and we executed this customer service plan, and the suburban districts were complaining that they were losing 500 kids, the Dallas ISD, from the suburban districts when we used to lose kids to the suburbs in Dallas. We went from a culture of entitlement to a culture of accountability. It can happen, it's going to take time, you got the right leader, you got the right team. But good things happen by design. You have to design the system. Don't expect instant success. But if you stay at it, and if it becomes a core value, then you will see a huge difference over time.
Thank you for sharing.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. So Socorro ISD is known for its customer service and for being very family-oriented. So our systems are here, but I liked what you said is measure what matters. So I know the systems are in place. We just have to find a way to codify and truly look at the numbers to truly reward and acknowledge and celebrate the great things that happen. So I just want to, we're there. We just have to do a little bit of the systems piece so that we could show it, so that we could get rid of our conservators. Love you.
Thank you, absolutely. And you know, it's a long way from Dallas to El Paso, but I sure love coming here a couple of times a month. Mr. Kim's here a little bit more often, I need to figure out how to get him out of here. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nohosa. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Okay, I know on the agenda, we have the consent agenda item next, but I do notice in the audience, we have some guests here from UMC. If there are no objections, I'd actually like to cover 10C next just so that the representatives from UMC don't have to stay here with us until we're done. Objections? Okay, so then with that, we're going to jump over to 10C, discussion and possible action regarding agreement for employer-sponsored health clinic. Ms. Stiles and Mr. Carmona, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Vasquez. Congratulations. I'm Selena Stiles, Chief Human Resources Officer for the district. And the agenda item is written for you to take action. However, we are still reviewing the interlocal agreement received from UMC. And just for full transparency, you all did not receive a copy of that in your board packet. So we didn't want to have you take action on something that you have not had the opportunity to review. So we're going to go through with the presentation so that you know what's going to be offered and what the options are. And in July, we'll include that item for you to take action. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carmona.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Good evening, board, President Nahara, members of the board, Mr. Vasquez, Superintendent. Congratulations again. Thank you for allowing me to bring this information before you, once again. Before I start the presentation, as Mr. Nahara already mentioned, we do have some guests from UMC who will be taking part of the presentation. But before I hand it over to them, if I may, let me just go over some of the information that we covered during the June 9th, no, I'm sorry. The last workshop where we covered some of the information that we're proposing in respect to transitioning our current onsite clinic to a nearsite clinic. And during that presentation, we covered what, why the change, what's changing, what is staying the same, the benefits of employer-sponsored health care, overview of UMC nearsite healthcare east, UMC proposed models, proposed timeline, and next steps. So again, in terms of why the change, as you have already been made aware, we have some operational costs for maintaining the in-house clinic, a strategic alignment with a long-term health fund and wellness goals, and an opportunity to partner with a community provider. What's changing is, as I mentioned earlier, moving the onsite clinic to a nearsite clinic. As you have heard already, we are anticipating that the closure of the onsite clinic will be on September 30th. The proposal is with a new provider, in this case, University Medical Center. And the new access point, the nearsite, will be located at 1521 Joe Battle Boulevard. Now, what's staying the same, as you have been made aware, again, based on the information that we covered during our last board workshop, our goal is to mirror or to have comparable services in terms of what's being offered at the clinic. In summary, that is primary care services, preventive screenings, and wellness checks. And respect to people who are participating in the health plan with Socorro ISD, if they continue to be on the base and the premier plan, it will be a $10 fee per visit. For those that participate in the consumer-driven health plan, it will be a cost share allowed amount. And like Ms. Stiles mentioned, there's some details that we're still are working on to be able to solidify the agreements and what's going to be offered through this nearsite point of access for health care. In addition to that, pharmacy services to include prescription delivery with a minimal copay or no copay when possible. One of the questions that were made during the workshop was, what's the type of service that's currently being offered through the onsite clinic? And just to give you a... And just to give you a quick, brief summary in respect to the current procedures that are being offered or that have been reported to administration by the clinic as services that are being offered, those services are identified by codes, current procedural terminology. And you see those codes listed on the slide. So it's worth mentioning that this information, as we continue a partnership, whether it's with UMC or any other healthcare provider, the codes change because as a new technology or new procedures become available to consumers, then those codes are either not, no longer being used, they're deleted, or they're updated to a new number. I'll give you an example. If you look at the table in the middle, I think is the fifth code, 7057 mammogram screening. It's replaced nowadays, if you were to look that same type of code, by 77067. And that's a screening of mammography bilateral. The point with this is that even though you have a table in front of you, our goal is to, again, have a standard list of procedures. And then those that require adjustments, again, based on the advancement of technology and additional services, then we'll make those adjustments within the service agreement itself. Now, in terms of the proposed models and timeline, I'd like to invite Mr. John Law, UMC District Chief Strategy Officer, and Ms. Anette Gonzalez, Assistant Administrative Clinic Services, to go ahead and continue with the presentation.
Hello, good evening, President Nahara, Superintendent Vazquez, and Board trustee members. Thank you so much for having us here. So we're here to provide more information related to what Mr. Nahara was explaining. So first of all, benefits for employer sponsor and healthcare, primary care. So Cigna, the key benefits of employer-sponsored primary care. Cigna Healthcare in 2023 found that integrating employer-sponsored primary care led to an average savings of $148 per member per month, while reducing emergency utilization by 17%. Permess Health in 2019 reported a 27% decline in emergency room visits and an increase in chronic care disease management following the implementation of an employer-sponsored clinic. Primary care access is directly correlated with improved employee attendance and performance. Additional studies cited financial returns as high as three to one, reduced downstream costs from chronic care implications, ROI through an estimated 45% low total medical costs, and increased employee engagement while providing preventative services. Overview of the UMC NHC East Clinic, which is located at 1521 Joe Battle. This primary care setting is a clinic that offers primary care as stated, but we also have imaging services, x-ray, ultrasound, bone density, mammograms, CT, and an MRI coming soon. We have a full laboratory that provides routine and diagnostic lab testing. We also provide specialty care. And on the purple box to the right of your, of the presentation, we have obstetrics and gynecology, gastroenterology, infectious disease, general surgery, nephrology, rheumatology, cardiology, geriatrics, pediatrics, endocrinology, and orthopedics. We also have a full-service retail pharmacy at this location. And we have a satellite emergency room that's attached to the clinic as well for 24/7 emergency room services. For the proposed model, I'll go ahead and pass it to John Law, so that he can continue with the presentation.
Good evening, President, Superintendent, and Board of Trustees. When, when your team approached us, they asked us to look for a model that could mimic what is happening at your Mountwood Clinic. And obviously, our location has services that are, you know, there are more services at the location on Joe Battle. So what we did is we offered two proposed ideas, hopefully to give you some flexibility in considering what option best met the needs of the district and its employees. And I'm going to walk through the two models. The first model is, is what we're calling a fee-for-service model. And, and essentially with both models, we would use nurse practitioners. They would be supervised by a physician in accordance with Texas law. And the, the primary care visit would be at a flat rate of $175 a visit. And so essentially, we would see as many patients that could visit us, and it would all be at that rate. And we would adapt our, our staffing to whatever the volume starts to look at. To give you a little context, traditional Medicare pays us roughly about $230 a visit. So that just kind of gives you a little sense of the economy in regards to a, a primary care visit. We would also have a defined list of lab tests, which we received from the codes that, that we were just shown before. We would also have predefined pharmacy prescriptions at, at the discretion of the district. And, and the employees would pay a fixed $10 fee. So essentially, the district would be charged $165, $10 would come from the payment from the employee. I just want to say that there's certain lab tests, and I'll show you this in a minute, that would be part of that primary care visit, they would fall under that $175. And then there would be other lab tests, which would have separate costs, which I'll show you in a second. If there's any durable medical equipment, we don't anticipate a lot. But if there is any, we would just simply pass through the cost to you, and we could allocate exactly what that equipment would be and what our cost is. And then prescriptions, as, as Annette mentioned, we have a full-service pharmacy. We're, we're fortunate as a safety net organization and a hospital that we access a program called 340B. This allows us to acquire medications at a much lower cost than a retail pharmacy. And so based on the specific prescriptions that the district would want to include in this plan, we would provide pricing that I think would be very competitive with, with whatever else could be found in the market. Now, Model Two is more of a flat rate. And in both cases, we want to set up a scheduling and a communication system that's specific for your employees. So when they come to our clinic, there would be a process that would be the Socorro process. We would have a separate phone number and we would have a separate workflow so that the employees would go through essentially a clinic within a clinic. With this flat rate model, it would be even more explicitly set up that way. Because we would have two nurse practitioners, two MAs, and two schedulers fully dedicated to your employees. So ideally, your employees would get used to seeing the same individuals on their visits. If you've been inside our clinic, there's about four different areas where you can register, and we would make sure one of those is set up specifically for your employees, so there's a consistent experience there. Essentially, the services that the individuals would receive would be the same as the fee-for-service model. The only difference is, is that there would be a flat rate of $875,000 over the course of a year to provide all of the primary care visits. To give you a sense, if there were 6,000 visits, the cost would be about $146 a visit. So, I mean, the benefit to this model is we can kind of predict what volume hopefully we're going to get, and we can staff accordingly on the front end versus having to adapt based upon maybe less predictable volume. The labs, again, I'll talk about in a minute, the DME would be handled the same way, and then the prescriptions would be handled the same way. So this is just sort of an example, example of some of the details. On the left, you would see certain types of tests that would be conducted as part of the primary care visit. And if you could kind of visualize, our clinic is set up with our exam rooms. We have the pharmacy in another area, then we have a lab in another area. So basically, everything that's done in the exam room with the nurse practitioner in terms of lab tests would fall into that, that left box. And this is specific to the items that the district staff asked us to identify. Everything on the right would actually go to a formal laboratory. And so they typically are more complex lab tests, and that's why we would, we would put, we would itemize the cost of each of these labs. Obviously, anything that happened in our clinic that was outside of the scope of what I just said would just go to your ETNA third-party administration plan. So if your employees chose to get other care, specialty care, imaging from us, that would just be covered as, it would be covered, you know, if they, if we never had this arrangement. The pharmacy pricing would be specific to any participant in the nearsite clinic. So if you had an employee that didn't go to the nearsite clinic, but went to something else, like a specialty provider, then the pharmacy pricing would all just tie into your, your ETNA TPA agreement. Really, in either model, we're open to some pre-arranged limits to what your volume could be. And so obviously, in the fee-for-service model, that's the part where you might feel like, hey, we can serve up to a certain volume, or, or we want to have some sort of checkpoint along the way. We're open to a one-year term. And we're also open to a mutual option to extend for multiple years. If we did go for multiple years, what we would recommend is that we use a cost adjustment based upon the Medical Consumer Price Index, which is just sent out by the Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics. And you can see in 2024, that was a 2.8 increase, 2.8% increase. This here is just a summary of both of those models. And I'm going to just pause there and see if you have any questions for me, because there's a lot of moving parts here.
I do. You brought up the 30, the 340B program, and I know that there were some pieces of legislation that were filed during the legislative session that may pose some challenges or some difficulties to that. And I'm curious to know if, if you could, if you could share, if there were, if, if there's any updates regarding that. I know, I know that the legislative session is over, but I know how critical the 340 program is to Texas hospitals in terms of just pulling down funding from, from federal sources.
I don't want to go too far into the weeds because I'm not really an expert on all of that. But what I'd say is, is that the pricing we've offered, we're going to be able to do it for this next year if we were to have a one-year agreement. The pharmaceutical companies typically don't like 340B pricing because we're buying the drugs from them at a lower cost. And so they have strong, you know, lobbying efforts to modify that. But I, I think if I go any further, I'm going to be outside of what I know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Woodcraft?
Sir, this may be more from Mr. Carmona, but about how many average visits we have per year at the Mountwood Clinic?
Yes, Mr. Woodcraft, so as mentioned earlier by, I believe it was either our MP or Dr. Nevades, they logged about 4,000, over 4,000 visits. And that's, that was with the two providers.
Yeah, I must have missed that one, thank you. And so, sir, for you, then how much flexibility is there in Model Two? If for some reason we went to 7,500 visits, how would we approach that?
So what, what we would request is sort of two approaches. One is, once we hit 6,000, we could just go to the fee-for-service model. So that, so 6,001 would be just the 175, and we wouldn't know where we were going to go, essentially. Or if we could agree upon adding a third nurse practitioner at the same scale, we would come up with a pricing approach that says, okay, based on our staffing, you know, it, it's going to be on the same economic scale as you see the 875. I don't know if it's a straight 50% to add another 3,000 visits, but it would be something along that scale to come to a set number of visits so that essentially we're establishing the fixed staffing to serve what you're expecting.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else?
One question. As we heard two of our representatives from the nurse clinic mentioned, or from the SISD clinic mentioned, what is it that we're taking or that is not going to be offered to our employees? Based on what you know about our SISD employee clinic, what is it that you offer or they offer that you cannot?
I, you know, I, I mean, we've visited the clinic and we've met with the staff. I think they're very good people. And, and I do want to say that we are open, if they are interested in coming to apply to work for us, we're open in considering the staff. I think we would just have to go through background checks and all the processes we would normally go through. I, I can't comment so much on what you're losing. I think the scope of services would be the same. One of the nice things about our clinics is you really have the full scope of care in one location. Now, obviously, the patients can always choose to go somewhere else, but if they did need to see a specialist, it would be in the same building. The specialist could actually talk to the primary care doctor. You know, the pharmacist, we have a whole pharmacy team, we have an imaging team there. So one of the strengths of our locations, we believe, and they're designed this way, is to just have a full, comprehensive care in one location. We, you know, and actually, Maria Zampeini, who's one of our leaders that's in the back, always says, you should be able to get 80% of your healthcare or more in this building because it's designed to get all of that. So we do think that's one of the advantages that we offer you. We also believe we can scale up and scale down based on your precise needs. Looking into the future, if this was a positive relationship for you and you wanted to go further with this, we have a location in Isleta that could potentially serve a different area of the district, and we're going to be building a new location in Horizon. And so I, I, I think one of the things we offer is the opportunity to, to scale up, scale down. We do have a pretty solid process in terms of making sure our productivity is adequate so that we can get the most out of those, those nurse practitioners we would have, you know, and, and we would talk to your human resources team about even scheduling. So if you, you know, you needed more scheduling after school hours, that's the sort of thing that we're willing to accommodate.
Thank you for the specificity of your response, thank you.
Ms. Garde?
Yeah, please, yeah.
The other thing I know that was brought up as a concern is we're really going to work hard on the transition of care. So as a patient exits this clinic and comes into the UMC one, we want to make sure we're requesting records, that the new provider has those records, is able to see the history, and then is able to build on whatever plan of care was already established at the clinic. So that is something that we do pride ourselves on, and it happens for any patient coming from any other organization. But I just want to ensure that as well.
My, my question is, so would, one of the things that I think made the, the clinic so unique is that it was consistent. The people that were seeing our employees was a consistent team. So our employees will be seeing the same team over and over again? It won't be a variety of different nurse practitioners? Will they be the same?
In the flat rate model, that's definitely our objective because we would be hiring nurse practitioners specifically to serve your employees.
Okay.
In the fee-for-service model, it's a little less predictable. I mean, from our point of view, because we don't really have a good sense, we know the numbers that have been shared, but the patients still have to make a decision. And so in that model, you know, we're going to have to figure out our staffing, but we would like it to be as consistent as possible and have a consistent experience for your employees.
When Model Two, it would be consistent, Model One, we're not sure yet.
Right. And I'm going to talk about the timeline in a second. But in Model Two, there may be an adjustment period because we need to make sure we have the staff in place to serve your employees, and that may take a little time depending on, you know, finding the right fit for that. So I, there may be a few-month period where we're kind of in transition, but our goal would be to have a consistent staff for your, for your people.
Thank you.
Mr. Law, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So if I'm understanding correctly, it appears that the Joe Battle Clinic would basically be the central location that our employees could access. However, you also mentioned the Isleta and the soon-to-come Horizon. So employees would be able to visit those locations as well if that happens to be more convenient for them? Or would it be specific only to the Joe Battle location?
Our recommendation, and, and this is in alignment with your team, is that we really focus on the Joe Battle location specifically initially. And that's really to make sure that the processes work smoothly, we have a clear system for your employees. Operationally, we've been meeting with our team because, you know, you could have a Socorro employee come for the nearsite clinic, you could have a Socorro employee come to see an OB-GYN that's not part of the nearsite clinic. And our team needs to make sure that that process works the right way because essentially, it's two different payment methods, which, which we can accommodate, but we want to get it right. And then at a point at which you're comfortable that we've succeeded, then we'd be open to the discussion of another location. But, but we really want to succeed and make sure this process. But, but we really want to succeed and make sure this process works for you.
Okay.
We're open to it. It's just, you know, step by step to success.
Makes sense, makes perfect sense. I just making sure that we're, that I understand that clearly because certainly that was, I think, one of the things that we heard from our staff as well, that, you know, the location was up here or, you know, on this, in this part of town. And so sometimes it was difficult for the employees, you know, to come to this, this part of town, but completely understand that we want to make sure that we're successful and their system in place first. And then we can think about, you know, spreading out to other areas.
Not to make it too complicated, but let's say, for example, say that you had employees go to the Isleta Clinic. Well, we potentially would want to have a different nurse practitioner who works at that location who just sees your employees. So we have two here, and now we're talking about another one. So we need to figure out kind of all the logistics of all of that. It, it just gets a little more complicated. It's doable. But, but I want to make sure we're successful before we move elsewhere.
Understood. Thank you.
I'll, I'll finish quickly. You all have a, have a large agenda. I'm, I'm impressed. So we've laid out a timeline here. And again, this is something we can be flexible with in working with your team. We really are seeing this timeframe as sort of an agreement finalization. As we get that into place, then we would go into operational planning on our side, which means getting that staff in place so that we have a consistent staff. At a, at another phase, we want to make sure, and, and really, I think your team's going to do this, but we want to give them any tools they need to communicate to your employee base and to all your covered lives about how they can access these services. And then we tentatively have looked at a full launch for August. That's tentative. I think it's kind of figuring out how we can get the pieces in place. And then one of the things that we're really committed to is providing ongoing performance management. And so we are laying out metrics that your team will want to see so that they can see what is the performance and what is the cost? And how is that proceeding? So we can kind of start to anticipate what is the best model to, to serve your employees appropriately. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over.
Thank you, John. So, Mr. Woodcraft, just to elaborate on the information in respect to, I'm assuming is the potential number of visits that we could have. We have about a little bit, around 5,100 employees insured under our plan and close to 9,800 lives. So between employees and dependents, that could potentially be the number of visits that we could see. But at this point, in the transition from the onsite clinic to the near-site clinic, another resource or piece of information that we are assisting our employees with is a list of healthcare providers that are taking right now new patients. Because, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, the resources that we are familiar with in our area, within the school district, you know, we're used to attending or seeing or seeking services from one clinic, we tend to go back to the same clinic. But as new locations are opening, as new healthcare partners are expanding their practices to this side of town, we're providing that information as well. And as we're receiving inquiries through our office, we're making them aware of, you know, where they can potentially set up a, their primary care services in addition to the prospect of the two proposals that we're visiting with UMC. So the point with this is that we're not only providing information in respect to what the alternative is that we're working on right now, but also what has already been established. So there's offices now in, along Eastlake, along Saragossa, and other areas within our, our, our boundaries. So as John mentioned, there is already a timeline that we are looking at to be able to keep ourselves in check in terms of making this project a success. In addition to that, we are publishing and will continue to advertise our contact information at the Department of Human Resources for those individuals, including covered dependents, that might need assistance with, you know, receiving care. Are there, oh, as, and I'm sorry, the last item that we have on the slide or on the presentation, it was in respect to the recommendation. But as Mrs. Stiles mentioned, at this point, there is no, not a recommendation per se since we would like for you all to have a finalized draft, at least, of the service agreement and bring this back to you in the board meeting in July. Are there any questions that I may?
One, sir. So as you, well, one for me. I can't speak for everybody else. As you talked about other healthcare providers in the area. For me, healthcare choice is a big deal. People should be able to choose where they go to get their healthcare, and I'm cool with that. From a district financial perspective, if an employee chooses to go somewhere else other than UMC, should we decide to go this route? Would there be an in-network versus out-network type of cost sharing that the employee would be more responsible for, for an out-of-network selection? Or how would that work?
Yes, sir. In summary, our plan, any of the options that we currently offer have two tiers. We refer to them as Tier 1 or Tier 2. Tier 1 is any hospital of Providence or hospital of Providence affiliate will offer the DPS discount. And Tier 2 is any other PPO provider that's contracted with Aetna. In this case, what we're talking in respect to UMC does not fall in within neither tier because it's a set fee per service. But the short answer to your question is yes, we have both. And like you mentioned, people have the option to choose, continue with their current provider if they're not part of hospitals of Providence, or choose to seek services from a hospitals of Providence provider.
Thank you.
Mr. Carmona, thank you. Thank you, M.C., for coming down. A great presentation. The only question I have is, and please don't take this the wrong way. And I was talking to Mr. Blanco. How do we select UMC? Do we go out for an RFQ? Or should we go out for an RFQ? Would, would Ten Hospital be a better, much better pricing over UMC? Or how is UMC selected?
And it hasn't, there's no, there is a inter-local agreement that we're trying to be part of. As you know, it's part of the services provided by the county. So it's something that we're trying to partner up through or with. And no, at this point, there has not been an RFP, RFQ, or any other process in that respect.
Sure.
Mr. Carmona, and then just for, for clarity, I know that you're, to differentiate between the two, you're saying onsite and near-site. But the onsite employee clinic is onsite only to Mountwood. For everybody else, it's still near-site. And so, you know, this while is, is, is a shift from the current location. Even the Mountwood Clinic is, is, is near-site as well. But I completely understand that it's easier to differentiate between a, a clinic that, that we operate and refer to that one as onsite and a clinic that someone else would operate, maybe even more central to the district, is near-site. Okay.
Correct. And as mentioned earlier, we will continue to monitor the development of the project. And if we identify that the need is within a different area within the school district, of course, that's something that we are already, you know, contemplating and making sure what would be the necessary steps. But it won't be until we have that data to be able to bring it forth and, you know, bring up additional options.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, back to our regular program. Just kidding. Let's go back to, now, in the consent agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve made by Mrs. Macias, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Discussion?
Yes, I was hoping to remove two items for discussion. The motion's been made, so I'd ask that we retract that.
Retraction?
I retract.
Can we remove D1 and D3, please?
I'm sorry, sir.
D1 and D3.
D1 and D3?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve excluding item D1 and D3?
Second.
Who's seconded? I'm sorry. Okay. Motion to approve made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Gardea. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Item 9D1, Mr. Woodcraft.
Hey, Mr. Solis, welcome back. I know we had some conversations earlier about some of the questions I had, but I felt that it was important for the general public to kind of get those same answers and not just our conversation. So can you please tell us, what are we transporting that requires an armored vehicle from our campuses? Where is it going? What is it? And just kind of help us elaborate on that, please.
Sure. Davis Solis, Chief Financial Officer for the District. So in regards to your question, Mr. Woodcraft, so the District does use armored vehicle services to securely transport our cash, coins, and check deposits collected by not only campuses, but departments to our depository institution, which is Wells Fargo Bank. Just to provide some context for you, you know, just this year alone, we transported approximately almost $3.9 million worth of collections. So using the armored vehicle or armored transport is recognized as a best practice in our, in school finance and is common practice across the large districts in our region. It does minimize the risk of theft, loss, and liability, especially when handling large sums collected from multiple locations, and ensures consistency and secure delivery of those funds and supports sound, sound financial controls. I think in our discussion, one of the things that we're also looking at as we move forward and one of the initiatives is, how do we move from this culture of cash, coin, and checks to a more cashless culture and the benefits of that? Some of the benefits of, of that would be, obviously, there would be less of a need to, for the armored vehicle services, right? Additionally, it would provide additional convenience and flexibility for our community, not only our, our parents, but also our students, to, to pay for various fees and, and different items. And the nice thing about moving to a more cashless culture then that money actually gets deposited directly into our, our, our financial institution. I think additionally, once we move in that direction, you're going to see that it does save time for, for our staff. You could imagine activities such as the collection or of, say, homecoming or prom, where sponsors are collecting, you know, those events run maybe 30, 40,000 in collections. And just think of the time that the sponsor is spending, not only collecting that money, but securing it, but also the time that's involved with the, our business clerks having to count that money and deposit it. And also, you know, just the liability. You know, people are as comfortable counting or, or controlling the cash. And so for that reason, we are looking at this new year into moving into a more cashless culture within our district. But in moving towards that, it, it is going to involve us meeting with stakeholders, principals, secretaries, sponsors. So that's the other part of it. So in order for us to, and that's why you're seeing that the proposal is only a one, one-year term with the possibility for a four-year extension because we are looking for this upcoming year to move to a more cashless culture within our district.
So understanding that there's nothing really going on in the summer, so the averages aren't going to work, but hear me out. Generally speaking, we're going to end up paying about $2,000 a week to transport $75,000 a week between facilities to Wells Fargo, where some local businesses will throw that in a locked money bag in the front seat of a 1995 Silverado and drive it there themselves. So are there any other avenues, such as potentially using the SISD Police Department to do that for us at a cost savings? Or is there any other thing that we can do to meet the same intent without the price tag?
So for us, like, safety is at the forefront of our school district. I think having maybe an armed security guard transport, we would probably be better served having our armed security at our campuses protecting our students than transporting money to the, to the, to our, to our bank. And in terms of, are there other avenues? We can explore that this year. But for now, we do need a secure way of, of transporting. I mean, it's 3.9 million, almost 4 million. The estimated cost is a, a fraction of that, maybe like about 120,000 a year. It does reduce the liability for any employee of the district in case they were to lose it or say they, there was a, they were involved in a vehicle accident or something happens where the money is, is lost, for whatever reason. For the amount of money it is, for the amount that we collect, I think it's minimal for the amount of risk and liability for transporting those funds. I think the, the direction should be, let's move in a cashless direction. And so we can minimize. I'm not sure we can totally eliminate this because there's always going to be some type of cash collection or some type of need. But we can definitely look at minimizing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve D1. Second.
Motion to approve made by Ms. Macias, seconded by Ms. Gardea. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. And the item passes. Moving on to item 9D3, District Efficiency Audit Services.
Mr. Woodcraft? Hey, Mr. Solis, welcome back. Same concept. I know, I know we talked about it. The audit specifically geared towards what they'll provide the voters in the event this board decides to go towards a VADER. Can you explain kind of what some of that is? And even if we don't decide to go to a VADER, how the District can use the information from this audit to better our processes, please?
Sure. So it is a requirement in order to, to go out for a VADER. And it does have to, we have to select the auditor at least four months in advance of, of making that decision. And, and based upon my presentation earlier, that decision isn't till August that you all would be asked to make that decision. With the election being November 4th, we would have to select an auditor by July 4th. That auditor would then have to present its findings within three months, which would be right around October timeframe, right? So the efficiency audit is a comprehensive third-party review of how the District manages its finances, staffing, and resource allocation. As I mentioned, it is required ahead of the voter approval and is designed to help the Board of Orders make an informed decision. The audit assesses financial and operational efficiency, use of fund balances and staffing levels, program costs, student outcomes in comparison to similar districts. The final report must include a summary of the finance, responses to 20 required elements, and that's required based upon the LBB or Legislative Budget Board. And it has to provide a clear, it has to be providing clear and plain language explanations for the public understanding. Most of the audit, I can tell you, will be, they can get the information from, obviously, the PMS information, TA reports. But there are certain, about seven of the items that, that they're going to, it's going to require local input from, from, from our team. So that's the, it's not going to tell you whether you need a V, a VADER, but it is one of the requirements. So the efficiency audit does tell us how efficiently, efficiently our processes are and where there could be room for improvement. But it is a requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pending any questions, motion to approve D3.
I second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Ms. Macias. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the item passes. Continuing then with new business, 10A, consider approval of new and additional teacher and administrator employment contracts. Ms. Stiles?
Wait a minute. I had, President Nahra, I have a question. So I know that there was individual approvals for D1 and D3, but did that also include approval for D2?
With the consent agenda?
Oh, okay. Okay, oh, got it, okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Good evening, President Nahra, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Vasquez. I'm Selena Stiles, Chief Human Resources Officer for the District. And this evening, I am here on behalf of Administration requesting your approval of additional teacher employment contracts for the 25-26 school year. A list of employees was provided in your board packet. Before you take action, I would like to give you an update on some numbers. From the action that was taken during the May 5th special board meeting, this evening, we are bringing back seven contracts for your approval, reducing the number of employees impacted by the reduction enforced to 23.
How many?
23. At this time, Administration recommends your approval of the additional teacher employment contracts for the 25-26 school year as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Ms. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Gardea. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Keep them coming.
NB, Ms. Stiles?
Yes, good evening again. This evening, I'll be presenting the proposed compensation plan for the upcoming 2025-2026 This evening, I'll be presenting the proposed compensation plan for the upcoming 2025-26 school year. I want to preface this information with me acknowledging that you received a copy of the compensation plan book yesterday. The book is a formality of what is posted online. However, all the changes that are being proposed to the compensation plan have been presented to you during the June ninth board workshop, and I will review them again tonight before you take any action. So tonight, I will be reviewing HB two specifications, proposed salary schedules, other compensation plan updates, the overall budget impact, and I will also review the final proposal for salary increases for the 2025-26 school year and the implementation timeline. HB two provides two allotments to support salary increases, the classroom teacher retention allotment and the support staff allotment. I need to stress that the implementation and decisions of the salary increases for our district are based on the state-provided allotments. We received guidance from TA through TASBO on June 12th on how classroom teachers would be identified, how the funds must be distributed, and the recommendations on how to handle situations where districts have teachers, nurses, and librarians on the same salary schedule. TA's recommendation is to separate the schedules and have one schedule for classroom teachers and another schedule for non-classroom teachers, nurses, and librarians. This is why in our meeting on June ninth and tonight, you will see two separate salary schedules, one for classroom teachers and the other for non-classroom teachers, nurses, and librarians. The support staff allotment gives funds for a salary increase for all other staff that are not classroom teachers except administration. This includes non-classroom teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors, paraprofessional staff, which includes clerical and instructional aides, auxiliary staff, which includes your custodians, CNS, transportation, MNO, technology, clinic staff, and professionals, not including administrations, such as assistant principals, principals, directors, assistant directors, and cabinet. The proposed salary increases for teachers, nurses, and librarians will be based on HB two. Classroom teachers will receive the following. One to two years will receive a 1.5% increase off-market midpoint, and that is covered under the support staff allotment. Three to four years will receive $2,500 annually, and that is inclusive of the step. And five-plus years will receive $5,000 annually, and that is also inclusive of the step. Non-classroom teachers, nurses, librarians will receive 1.5% off the market midpoint, and that also includes their step. This is what the proposed classroom teacher pay schedule will look like for 2526 school year. There was a slight change compared to the version I shared on June ninth due to the updated guidance we received from TA. The difference is that the total increase amount includes the step. And I also updated the neighboring districts' information applying the same formula, including the step within the increase, which also updated their pay schedules. As you can see, Socorro SD is still the highest-paying district across, across the neighboring districts, making the assumption that they're following the same formula we are. This is a proposed non-classroom teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedule, and this is what it'll look like for the 2526 school year. It's difficult to assume what our neighboring districts will do since they do have the option to keep one pay schedule or apply a separate one with an increase as we have done. Based on the HB two allotment estimates for support staff, we've calculated that it totals about a 1.5% increase for all other support staff except administration. The comparisons here with our neighboring districts are still using their current 2425 salary schedules. I did try reaching out, since their 2526 stuff isn't posted online, and they were a little reluctant to share information with me, so we're going with assumptions. This is a proposed counselor pay schedule, and it will be based on the non-classroom teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedule for 2526. And as I mentioned during the June ninth board workshop, there is compression between the teacher pay, teacher pay scale and the administrative pay scale. The starting pay for a new teacher has a starting daily rate of 32353, and the starting daily rate for an assistant principal is 31592. The recommendation to address the compression is to change the 105 pay grade minimum, midpoint, and maximum to 324, 395, and 466. And I do want to note that this does not reclassify the position. This is just an adjustment to address compression. To avoid creating more compression within the professional and administrative pay family, the recommendation is to adjust all other preceding pay grades accordingly. You can see the previous minimum, midpoint, and maximum in red and the recommended rates in blue. Other changes that are being proposed are to update the recruitment stipend for special education. We will be targeting our school psychologists, since that is a very high-need area, and we will be offering a $5,000 stipend to any newly hired school psychologist regardless of where they come from. The stipend will be paid out for one year, and it will be prorated if the employee leaves before the school year is up. In addition, we are adding a stipend to support teachers with higher class sizes. For elementary core teachers that will have 25 students or more in their classroom, they will qualify for a $2,500 stipend. And lastly, we're proposing to increase the special education BIC unit teacher stipend from $2,000 to $3,000. These classes are hard to fill, and it not only requires a sped certification, but they also have to have that core content. And in many cases, these teachers are faced with teaching a range of grade levels within one classroom and have to follow all testing requirements. So administration is recommending the following pay increases. Classroom teachers increase per HB two requirements. Classroom teachers for one to two years of experience will get the 1.5% increase off the market midpoint. Non-classroom teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors, a 1.5% increase off-market midpoint. Paraprofessionals, auxiliary, technology, clinic, and professionals, a 1.5% increase off the midpoint. And administration, a 1% increase off the midpoint. Now, the asterisks there are referencing the compression adjustments. And so if any employees are impacted by a compression, they would receive the greater of the two, either the increase amount or the compression adjustment. This is the overall budget impact for the salary increases. Classroom teachers, approximately $11.5 million. That does include the 1.5% for the years one to two. Those are, that amount is about 200,000. So classroom teachers for the allotment for the retention is actually 11.3, and then the 200,000 makes up the difference. For non-classroom teachers, nurses, and librarians, you're looking at about 400,000. Counselors, 200,000. Your paraprofessionals, technology, and auxiliary staff, about 900,000. Your professionals, clinical staff, and your professional technology staff, about 300,000. And administration, it's about 300,000. So the timeline to implement these increases will be as follows. So we had the board workshop on June ninth. Tonight, we're recommending and hopefully get an approval of the recommendations presented. And then the salary increases themselves will not be implemented until September 30th. And the reason behind that is because that's when we start getting funding from the state in September. So they're effective July one. Employees will receive retro payments, but it will, they won't see the, the retro payment and the change until September 30th paycheck. So at this time, administration recommends the approval of the compensation plan updates and salary increases as presented.
Questions, Mr. Gera.
Stiles, thank you so much. We haven't had a state increase since 2019, and I believe when they started with this, they started off this year at $390, and I guess it went down to $55. And the only money that's coming out of the general fund is only going to be for admin, which is 1%, correct?
Correct.
So I wish that we could give more raises, but this is what the state is giving us. And we haven't gotten a raise in the past year and a half, I believe it was. So thank you for being fair across the board and trying to give everybody something, and I applaud you and your team for that. Thank you.
Woodcraft.
Yes. I have a few, so please bear with me. So the compensation book we got yesterday really helped compare between the slide presentation and the book. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to give you a read ahead on questions, so this is not a sharpshooting, but here we go. Without stipends, how many teachers do we currently have that are making more either daily or annually than assistant principals? Rough guess, because you're on the spot now, but...
I don't know off the top of my head. I can tell you every new assistant principal that was hired within the past year, daily is making less than teacher, than a teacher. Now, these are individuals that were teachers and are becoming assistant principals, so they made more as a teacher on the daily than they are as an administrator.
But the, the annual salary is still more.
The annual salary is still more, yes, because they're working more days.
And so I want to make sure that we're not adjusting policy for the exceptions. You know, if there's like two, three, that's concerning. If there's 200, 300, okay, now I can see it. But I think without that comparison, I just, I have a few more questions.
So I think in the Friday packet, I provided a breakdown of how many were impacted with compression, and that would be kind of a rough idea of who might be lower than where they should be.
I'll go back and double-check if I may have missed it. Currently, so looking at this sheet, what we're really talking about is roughly pay grades 105 to 110?
Correct.
Is what we're looking at. From what I see, most of those folks in those pay grades already receive automatic stipends for mileage, and most of them receive professional stipends already. Currently, teachers still get mileage, but they have to apply for that separately. It's not an automatic given, is that correct?
Correct. And that would be mainly because it's not necessarily a requirement of the position they hold.
I, I noticed on, and I couldn't find it in the book, but it was on the slide deck, clinic and professionals, is that the medical clinic that we're now looking at transitioning to UMC or what are we looking at here?
Correct, so the clinic staff will still qualify for the increase while they're employed with the district. So through September, if it's, it's approved, they would qualify for the increase because they're still employees of the district.
So I think here's, here's my frustration, because I can see where Mr. Gera is coming from, and I understand why this is important. But reading the pulse of the community, here's where my consternation is at. Coming into this, we were told six to eight months ago that 90% of our budget was personnel costs and 10% was focused elsewhere. We've laid off teachers, well, thank God, not as many as originally projected, but we still laid off teachers. We've cut programs, we've closed vacant positions that we're not hiring for. We're at risk of a decreased credit rating. And although we can compare it on a daily basis, our administrators in 105 through 110 still make more annually than the teachers do. And I think the frustration point is, when we talked about initially cutting teachers but not necessarily cutting admin, I know there were closed positions, and I know there were some things that we did. And so the public doesn't generally know that. But now we're talking about giving admin raises as we're just starting to come out of this financial hole that we've kind of dug ourselves into over the past 10 years. And I think that's where my sticking point is on this. I understand everything from HB two, that makes total sense to me. But my concern is, potentially, with a $7 million budget from the general fund, and I know it only, 320,000 doesn't sound like much, but that's one HVAC system for Mission Ridge that we may not have been able to replace before. That's a set of bleachers at Mountwood High School that we may not have been able to replace before. And that could be potentially four to four and a half teachers that we could hire back. And that's my concern is, I unders, like, I can empathize with this, but to me, that's not where our money is best suited. And so I don't, I don't know if I can support this without a modification.
Any other questions?
Ms. Stiles, at our last meeting, I had asked about special ed. Did, did we receive any special ed funding that we were able to?
So we will be receiving additional special ed funding. I don't know how that is broken down yet, so we will be evaluating what that looks like over time. Now, we can, the, the compensation plan is a living document. It's, it, it can change throughout the year. In fact, I think last year I was a regular standing here with all the changes we made to the compensation plan. So if, after evaluating, making sure through staffing, we have the appropriate staff and everything, then we go back and evaluate those stipends. I know that was your, your question at the time and evaluate if we need to make those changes. And we can bring that at any time, we don't have to wait for the following school year.
No, my only concern was the classes that were over 25 were going to qualify for a $2,500 stipend.
I do recall you talking about that. So I know in Ms. Solivares's presentation, there is an EEB for special education. And so it just, it talks about if there's so many students in a class, how many teachers they qualify for, any instructional aides, that kind of thing. My understanding, and Ms. Solivares, they can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the class size did not increase on that end. What happens is they get additional staff to support the classroom. So that's why a regular teacher would qualify for this stipend because they don't get additional staff to support them for the added pupils or students. But in a special ed class, they do get additional support through, whether it's an instructional aide or, or separating the unit with additional classroom. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. President, over here. My name is Davis Solis, and I just want to say this to your question here. The, the, this Senate Bill Four did add additional dollars toward special education. Unfortunately, the Texas Education Agency will have to go through some rulesmaking and define what those services are. And so that's going to take some time. There are some thoughts that it may take potentially a semester or a year in terms of that distribution of those particular dollars. And I think this is why it's so important, at present moment, what you heard from your special ed director earlier in terms of sort of restructuring your special ed programs to meet and identify so that you optimize potential dollars coming in. If you do get additional dollars, I think it'll be towards the assessment areas because there's been a outcry of lack of funding for the amount of assessments that are required mandated by the federal law in special education. So while that dollars may be coming flowing through that area, you could be saving the dollars that you already committed to now towards other areas within special ed. Does that make sense there? So it's once again really defining that program. And I will certainly suggest as you move forward as a board to really get into the special ed structure of how students are identified, how students are assessed, numbers of assessments and so forth to ensure whether or not the special ed program is robust and is optimal.
Any other questions?
Sir, sorry, do you have a question?
Just one other question. Going to your proposed compression plan, or the, what percentage is the increase? It's $8 roughly from the amount that we currently have to the proposed, so what is that percent?
It varies by individual in reality because there's a placement schedule for years zero to 15 that we have for employees. And so basically, I have to compare their years of service, where they have their experience, what their current daily rate is, and what the placement says they should be. So it varies by individual. Some increases are a couple of dollars, some increases are more, and that tells you that that individual was significantly lower than where they should be.
Again, I, I started with you earlier, just doing napkin math. You know, if it's $8 increase from $341, which is the daily rate, that would be about 2.3% increase. Please correct me.
And you're, you're talking about daily rate to daily rate, yeah, you're right.
So just perception. That means that our administrators are getting a 2.3% increase when our auxiliary are only receiving 1.5. And then we have the 1.5 possibly on top because you said the best of. So just again, basic math, just something for you all to think about because that's, those are the questions that we receive.
Right.
Sir, if there's no other pending questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve with the following modifications. No adjustment to pay grades 105 through 110 for personnel outside of HB two that account for compression.
Does that include the 1 point, or the 1% increase though?
The 1% increase for?
For administration.
So anything that's outside of that HB two that we're adding the 105 through 110 compression, that, that would be included in?
So the 1% increase off the midpoint is still on the table, just not the compression, just for clarity.
Well, that was, that was account for compression, correct, the 1%?
It's, it's part of, so it's a 1% increase or compression, so it's either or.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I bundle those together synonymously.
So you're saying no increase at all for administration?
From 105 through 110 for that purpose, correct?
No second.
Make a motion to approve of the compression plan that administration is recommending.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Gardea. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And the item passes. Thank you, Ms. Stiles. We've already covered 10C, so we're going to go to 10D. Consider approval of the 2025-2026 school district budget. This time it is Mr. David Solis. The real David Solis.
First, I would like to just thank our budget team led by David Gutierrez for all their work during the budget development process. I also want to recognize Mr. Gutierrez for his work in preparing the proposed budget book that you all received. That included the information, the graphs, and the descriptive narratives. He did a really great job in preparing that document. At this time, administration recommends consideration of approval of the submitted budgets for the general fund, which includes the Aquatic Center, Child Nutrition, and the Debt Service Fund as presented.
Questions? Have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Ms. Gardea, seconded by Mr. Woodcraft. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Thank you, Mr. Solis. 10E, consider approval of design services RFQ number E2368. Mrs. Fierro, please.
Good evening, for President Mr. Nahara, members of the board, sorry, again. Good evening, for President Mr. Nahara, members of the board, Superintendent Mr. Vazquez, congratulations. I'm Lila Ana Fierro, the Director of Asilios in Construction. And for this item, administration recommends that the board trustees approve the design services for HVAC upgrades at Mission Ridge and Sierra Vista Steam Academy Elementary Schools. These services will be obtained through the miscellaneous professional services district-wide RFQ E2368. The total cost to the district will be $313,000. That includes $180,000 for Mission Ridge and $133,000 for Sierra Vista Steam Academy. This contract is for design services only. I'm happy to answer any questions that you, you may have.
Questions? Have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion to approve made by Ms. Gardea, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Item passes. Thank you, Ms. Fierro. Continuing then, consider approval to, to, consider approval of revisions to policy CO local. Shinaski, please.
Good evening. Congratulations, Mr. Vazquez, Superintendent. Good evening, President Nahara, Superintendent Vazquez, and members of the board. Thank you for your service to our community, our district. We just truly appreciate you all here, and thank you so much. I'm here to, my name is Shelley Chinaski, and I'm the Director of Child Nutrition. I'm here to talk about our charge policy. We currently have a charge policy in place, and I'm requesting revision to that policy. Our goal in child nutrition is always to feed as many kids as we can for free. And we currently do an outstanding job with that. We feed every child in the district breakfast for free, no child pays for breakfast. So give them the great start to the day. And then for lunch, we have 33 campuses that participate in the Community Eligibility Provision Program. And so they all eat free at those campuses. And that is based on the economic status of those households and students that attend those schools. So the, our, our next way that we help families with, with meals and the cost of meals is to provide meal benefits. So they apply with an application, parents apply, and based on their income, they are either free, reduced, or paid, okay? So currently, all national school lunch programs, they must have a charge policy that is very clear and it's approved by the board. And we do our current policy, and I apologize, I should be going through this PowerPoint. So we have 33 campuses, again, and TDA and USDA require that we have a policy, and we do. And currently, our policy is that we do not have a limit on meal charges. So a child, a student, it has no limit whatsoever. And we work with parents to help collect those, to collect those charges. What you'll see here on, on this slide is the balance of uncollected meal charges at the end of the given school year. So in, and, and we call it our annual negative balance. So in 1819, we had a negative balance of $7,188.30. Now, this was when we first started with the unlimited charges. 1920, of course, we had $8,631. But then COVID happened, and so then everybody, we started doing curbside meal service and feeding all families and children for free. So that, that's what happened on that year. The following year, TDA said, hey, or USDA, I should say, said, hey, let's go back to regular free, reduced, paid meal statuses, and it didn't work. So they immediately reverted, and October, everybody went free again. The following year, everybody was free again for '21, '22. So then '22, '23 came, and they went back to normal program operational as far as CEP campuses and free, reduced, and paid based on an app, meal application. So there you can see that with no, with our charge policy that we have in place, by the end of the school year, we had 47,000, over 47,000 in unpaid meal charges. And these are uncollected meal charges. Then TDA allowed that year, they said, hey, let's allow school nutrition programs to carry the balance of those unpaid meals to the next year to allow for further collection efforts. We call parents, we do all calls, we do emails. We, our administrators support us with calls. So we do a lot to try to collect these charges, because we know that it's critical that we collect the charges. So we did, we carried that balance over. So by the end of '23, '24, last school year, we had a negative balance, which included the prior year of 72,253. Now be mindful that we were audited, and the auditors suggested, don't carry it over. It, it gets messy, it's hard to collect, don't. So we reverted back to, we collect that year, we make every single effort we can to collect those charges, and then the new year starts over, okay? So currently, to date for '24, '25 school year, you'll see it says 78,000. But that was when I created this PowerPoint for you all. I do have an update. Our current negative balance is $72,424.80. So we have brought that balance down. A lot of that is with senior clearance and just normal collection efforts. So we, we, I, I would really like to propose a change to this policy. I believe that it will help to create some stability for this negative charge balance that continues to grow. So, "A student with an exhausted or insufficient balance on his or her meal account shall be allowed to continue to purchase meals for up to five days for elementary, middle, and high school students. If credit is exceeded and student continues to come through the line, alternative, low-cost, reimbursable meal peanut butter or sun butter sandwich, which is a nut-free spread, and it's made of sunflower seeds, fruit, vegetable, and a choice of milk will be offered to the student at no charge." This is a new opportunity for us to provide a free meal to our students, to get the reimbursement from the government to, to provide that meal, to stop the charges. But what we're not doing is, we're not turning a student away, we're not taking a plate away from the student. We are feeding kids still. The difference is that this, this alternative meal will be a third choice at all our high schools, pardon me, at all our campuses that do not have CEP or free meals. So any child can pick this meal. So that's the beauty of this program is, or the way TDA has designed it, it takes that stigma out. So now you see a kiddo with peanut butter sandwich, they're thinking, oh, they don't have money, they're a paid student. Well, that's not allowed at TDA. You're not allowed to share statuses. So we have to be very, very careful how we do this. So what TDA and USDA designed is, have an alternative line that anybody can eat from. But you'll help direct those students who do not have money in their account to that line to get a meal. And it's free, and it's reimbursable. So our current meal pricing, elementary is $2.20, secondary is $2.55, and reduced is $0.40. So maximum would be $11 for our elementary, $12.75 for our secondary, and reduce would go up to $2. So that would be the maximum allowed charges that they would be allowed. And I think that would be very doable for collection efforts for our cashiers, because it'll never get so high that maybe a family can't afford to make some small payments and, and keep being able to get those choices that they want. But they'll always have that peanut butter or that soy butter alternative meal. And I, I say soy butter, I meant sun butter, it's really good. It is so delicious. Anyway, I'll have to bring y'all some samples. And so administration recommends the approval of, of the policy as written, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Questions?
Just thank you for mentioning, you know, that you took into consideration the stigma of our little ones and that everybody has that option, and who doesn't love peanut butter sandwiches? So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, we think it's going to be a big hit. Thank you, Ms. Masias.
Shinaski, can, is it, is it possible to ensure that identification of whether a student has funds in their account or not? Oh, and just by the way, I did the quick math, because I was thinking, well, okay. Yeah, I'm thinking crazy.
33 CEP campuses?
We have 51 total campuses, so only 18 of our campuses are not CEP qualified, right?
Correct, sir.
Seven of them being at the high school, or, or high schools.
That's correct.
Okay, so anyways, just a quick analysis there, a quick breakdown. But is it possible to make sure that we identify and discreetly direct the students without funds in their account to the appropriate line at the beginning? Because I know one of the complaints that we had going, you know, far, 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 far back was that students would get the traditional meal, and then at the end, it was taken away from them, and they were told to go to the alternative line. So if there's a way to be able to identify, and like I said, discreetly direct the student that needs to be directed, and those, you know, who are making their own choice of their own, okay, you know, two separate lines anyways. But that would be ideal.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I will work with my team to get some really great ideas on how we can handle that. I think the biggest challenge is going to be high school. Elementary and middle, that's very manageable. It, it's the high school that we are going to strategize and try to put some good processes in place to not have that happen. But of course, our high school students, you know, they, they know if they owe money or not. So typically, they're either going to line up or they're not. So, you know, so I, I may be overanalyzing that.
Right. And do we, um, do we analyze the students who repeatedly do not have funds in their account so that at some point, we could have some type of intervention, maybe from a counselor? You know, to say maybe at the time, you know, they, they, our current economic situation being what it is, right? Inflation, job loss, et cetera. You know, to, to where maybe at the beginning of the year, they didn't qualify, but, you know, if there's some type of intervention that we could get to, you know, to maybe encourage them to reconsider a meal application, et cetera, do we track?
We, we absolutely, the first thing that we do when we see a trend of them not paying is we reach out to the household, the parents or guardian, and we encourage them to apply for meal benefits. Because maybe something's changed, and they might qualify, as you said so well. And we do always get with administration and share the balances so that way we can intervene and get the help that maybe a family may need. I think we can improve on that, so that will definitely be my goal, sir.
And then, um, for the full price, and I'm not, I'm not familiar if, whether for the reduced price, the app is still available, but, but do we encourage? Because I remember using the app, and I remember that when the balance was falling, falling, falling low, and you could set the threshold.
You can still do that.
So that's still available, because I remember it would remind me, it would like, you know, send me a notification so that I could refill the account. So we're still using that app as well, right?
Yes, sir, and also, we do, do the all calls as well. So if the balance gets negative or just low, on, on Sundays, there's an automatic message that goes out. But then also the My School Bucks, it alerts you as well, if, if you choose to have your account with My School Bucks.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that is available. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Ms. Masia, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Thank you, Ms. Shinaski.
Thank you so much.
10G. Consider approval of Purchase Cooperative Tips 220105. Ms. Rohan Ramos.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Vazquez. Congratulations, sir. I'm Alice Ramos, Chief Technology Officer for the district. This evening, I'm seeking your approval to transition the district's network firewall infrastructure to a more cost-effective solution through a 36-month lease agreement. After an evaluation by the department's network team, an alternative model was identified that meets our infrastructure needs while significantly lowering long-term costs. The recommended financing structure includes three annual payments, which ultimately results in approximately 35% annual savings from what we're currently paying. Administration recommends your approval to proceed with this lease agreement to ensure continued network security and also maximizing fiscal responsibility. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Questions? Have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion to approve made by Mr. Woodcraft. Motion to approve made by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. The item passes. Thank you so much, Ms. Ramos. All right. And we'll continue to executive session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding former employee Jay Castorena to receive intruder detection audit report findings for district campuses and to consider administrative recommendations for Director of Emergency Management, principal position at Myrtle Cooper Elementary School, and manager of District Nurses under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.076. The time is ten twenty-nine PM, and the date is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
fifty-one campuses. But we're not just a number. Here, we're cared for, we're loved, we belong. Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Wanna be a health professional? Once a bulldog, always a bulldog. Wanna design skyscrapers? There's an empire for that. Have you heard, the early bird gets the worm? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over sixty years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities, and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March third for kinder through twelfth grade. Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs, and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait. Secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
Socorro ISD offers forty-five different pathways in CTE. We have added PTECs, Pathways in Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies. And we also, throughout the district, offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals, so we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different, and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would've never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school. I feel like I'm doing something that I want to, and the day goes by quick, super quick. And it just gives that sense of well-being and family, and it really is a dream because I would've never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend, and through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over eighty percent first selection offered for our students.
The Libertas Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity, even as a high school student starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand, and you get to learn about these careers that you wanna go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school, which is really unique. It's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun, but we really have become like a family. I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a huge investment, not only in equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our, our teachers' credentials, getting them training, keeping them up to date with current standards. Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer our kids is, supersedes most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that we'll continue to progress with what, what, what's leading
So our dual-language program consists of two different types of models. We have the ninety-ten, which is for pre-k students, and this is where the students are in a classroom with one teacher. Depending on their first language, they're gonna get ninety percent of the instruction in English, ten percent in Spanish, or vice versa, ninety percent in Spanish, ten percent in English. And then we have our fifty-fifty model, and this starts from kinder all the way to fifth grade, and this is where the students have two teachers where they're learning both languages, English and Spanish, fifteen, fifty percent of the time depending on the taught subject and language.
The dual-language program is so much more than just learning to speak in another language. They learn how to read, how to write, and they learn about the other culture and how to appreciate it, and, and they become very successful.
In order for the students to become bilingual and bilingual, they need to make sure that they are consistent with the program at least five years. Once a student completes five full years in the dual-language program, then they can qualify for a Spanish high school credit that they take with them when they're in middle school.
I think it's important to learn English and Spanish so people can feel happy that you can communicate them in Spanish or English. So when I'm older, I could, and they ask me questions in Spanish, I can answer them in Spanish and English.
We are growing our students in a very competitive, global society where dualism is extremely important in any type of business that you go into, not just into education. The students, we're preparing them to be global, competitive citizens of society, and having that dualism in their pocket is really going to open doors for them.
El conocimiento que adquieren se refleja no nada más académicamente sino también culturalmente, socialmente. Ellos aprenden de culturas diferentes, aprenden a convivir con personas que son diferentes a ellos. Y luego yo pienso que eso también los ayuda a sentirse aceptados, aceptar a otros, y es un programa bien bonito, me encanta.
Pues yo me siento feliz porque soy en dos lenguajes. Van a tener dos maestras, van a aprender dos lenguajes, y van a tener muchos amigos que hablan español y inglés.
I can say that SISD is truly the district that offers many opportunities for our students, and I vouch that dual-language is not just opening doors for our students to become bilingual and bilingual, but it's opening doors for their future.
Socorro ISD makes learning innovative. We fly drones, we take center stage, we take care of the environment, and we learn to take care of our health and become lifelong learners. Our new elementary academies offer unique programs to inspire, challenge, and prepare us for success. Register now at sisd.net and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
The Socorro Independent School District is committed to helping all students find their voice and achieve their highest potential. We understand the important role that families play in our children's education, and we welcome you, our military-connected families, to Team SISD. With forty-six schools designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency, the most of any school district in the El Paso region, Team SISD is committed to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families through a variety of resources and services. These include a comprehensive website for military families, a campus transition program, multiple special events, military family life counselors, and a military liaison at each of our fifty-one campuses who all reach out and serve our military-connected families. Team SISD stays in close contact with our Fort Bliss counterparts to access and share information, ideas, and trainings to provide the best education for our sixty-five-hundred-plus military-connected students. To assist with the social and emotional needs of our students, we maximize support services by engaging with our school counselors, including our military and family life counselor and local agencies such as NAMI, the YWCA, Child Guidance Center, local daycare providers, and the Paso del Norte and Meadows Family Leadership Council. We value and greatly appreciate the sacrifice our military parents make for our country, our community, and our children. We salute you, and we are delighted to have the opportunity to serve you and your family in our district. Thank you for being part of our district and helping us ensure that Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, the Socorro Independent School District hosted the two thousand twenty-five SISD Teacher of the Year Elite Eight Reception at the Technology Service Center. All SISD campus teachers of the year were honored with a special token of appreciation commemorating their achievement, and the top Elite Eight finalists were announced during the special ceremony.
The words can't describe the gratitude that I have to the district, to my campus, to my administration team, to my colleagues, to my wife, my family. Just very, very blessed, overwhelming feeling of just, you know, gratefulness.
You're always trying to like just say your name in your brain over and over and over, and then you actually see it, and then it's like, oh my gosh! And you're just shocked, shocked that out of all the fifty teachers, you're one of the top eight selected.
Dr. Ignacio Astorga, Principal at Socorro High School, was named the District Nine Administrator of the Year at this year's District Nine Spring Conference at America's High School. The purpose of District Nine is to develop leadership abilities in students and advisors, promote democracy as a way of life, and establish and uphold high standards for local school councils.
It's a hard work of everybody. It's a culmination of not just the faculty and staff, but of what our students do and what our expectations are of our kids. And our expectations should be high for any school that we're at. And our, and if you challenge the kids, they will reach that challenge, and that's what our kids have done, they have reached that challenge. And this is just a culmination of everything. So this award's not for me, it's for Socorro High School and our kids.
I was so honored that Ms. Lopez reached out to me to write a letter of rec for him. He has been my principal since the beginning of freshman year, so throughout this whole journey, I have been with him, nothing but support from him, and anything we have given of ideas or anything that we need, he has supported us one hundred percent, and no doubt in anything that we can do. Writing the letter of recommendation for him felt so natural, anything came out, and just describing him as a wonderful principal was amazing to do. And I know he supports a student council, so to put him in a D-nine level was just an amazing experience to do, and I'm so glad not only myself, but the rest of my council could help and surprise him. It was hard getting him out here because he knows everything that goes on on our campus, so a little lie to get him here, I was totally okay with it. And seeing his surprise and seeing his reaction just made my day and my year to make him a D-nine Administrator of the Year.
The American Federation of Teachers gave away over one thousand books to students and teachers of all grade levels at Colonel Ben Narbith Elementary School as part of the Reading Opens the World Initiative with First Book.
We believe in giving back to our community much-needed resources to make sure that our students succeed. We like to give them away and make sure that there's plenty opportunities for our kids to be successful and thrive.
It's a whole other world. It opens up a whole new world for our students, and, and for them to get, just get away from the TV and the social media and just sit down with a, with a good book and enjoy that, they're, they're really excited about it.
I always suggest to the kids to read because it can help them be like super smart, they can learn how to pronounce bigger words.
Socorro ISD interim superintendent James Vazquez surprised the top-four school support Employee of the Year finalist with a special gift and visited each of their campuses and departments. Francisco Felix Martinez is the head custodian at Mission Early College High School.
For me, the most important thing is that I'm part of a bigger thing than, than all of us, and what it is for me is that having a clean classroom, clean restrooms, and to see those kids that are, the students that are happy and when they graduate, and they graduate from college is something that is priceless to me because I'm part of it, and I'm making a difference for, for my campus.
Armando Álvarez is a crosswalk monitor at Loma Verde Elementary School.
I couldn't believe it, though. You know, I, I didn't think you were coming to see me, like I said earlier, though. I was just like doing my regular stuff like I always do, trying to help the kids, make sure that they have their food and everything, but I am really surprised.
Jesús Salas is the head custodian for the Department of Athletics.
I feel so proud myself, and I feel so proud of the team that we work here in the Athletics Department, and to be recognized, like, it's awesome, guys. Also, I feel like the district, like the whole district employees, all custodians, I'm representing that, not only my, my facility, I'm representing like maintenance and operations at all, you know? So I feel, feel amazing.
And Deney Muñoz is the campus secretary at Specialist Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
We have an amazing team here, and I, they're my babies. My, the team here is literally my baby, and just to see my team out here in the front supporting me when I'm the one that supports them all the time, it's just so fulfilling. It's, it's really just an emotion that's so fulfilling.
The University of Texas at El Paso awarded excellent scholarships to thirty-eight students from America's High School and nineteen students from Montwood High School. The scholarships that range from two thousand to eight thousand dollars will allow students to pursue their dreams of higher education at UTEP.
It goes beyond just that you pick of the ranking, that they do so many things. Their family dynamics are so complex, and there are students that sometimes they never thought of getting a scholarship, and only like smart students know, everything matters. So you will have students, you will have parents, and for the first time, they're gonna be talking about more than just financially, they're gonna be talking about, my son, my daughter is getting a scholarship, a UTEP Excellent Scholarship, and we're so proud of that.
I feel really good about myself because during like the previous years, I was kind of like down about my grades, but like I got them up, and knowing that I got this scholarship like just gives me that peace of mind.
This is just an exciting opportunity. Relieving this financial burden is just something that everyone is looking for. I believe being able to be a recipient of the scholarship is something so honorable. UTEP was the university I was planning on attending, so just having that leverage on, on that concern of like, how am I gonna pay for this, or, and all that, like just it going away is something that I'm grateful to receive as a person.
I'm actually really excited. I didn't know it was happening. I thought this was like an information thing, like they'd be like, oh, like you're a finalist, but you have to do this, this, and this to win it. I didn't know we were gonna win, but I'm actually really excited.
The Libertas Academy for Law, Government, and Public Administration was awarded the Haddon Summers Civic Foundation Grant for the ninth year in a row. This grant allows students to learn about civics during their spring break and introduces incoming eighth graders to the advanced academic academy. This year's focus was the First Amendment.
We use that topic because I think the kids find it very interesting, but it also allows them an opportunity to understand the concept of researching, the concepts of looking up court decisions, and then keeping updated with, you know, current decisions, with how it works. And then we also gave them an insight of to, you know, what are their rights on the school campus, because they think that they have unlimited rights, and it gives them an opportunity to see how, you know, Supreme Court decisions, local decisions also impact their daily lives.
I feel like it's going to give me a head start at life, mostly, and it's going to help me advance in school, help me with a lot of different things.
I mean, I already know about the First Amendment, but it goes so deep into detail about like, our freedoms and stuff, and the court cases about the First Amendment.
Team SISD sophomores, juniors, and seniors explored future career options at the Annual College Career and Job Expo at Montwood High School. Students got the opportunity to speak with college, technical school representatives, and meet with local business and industry partners to learn about possible opportunities available to them, such as internships or employment opportunities.
The reality of our students going to school without working is, it's been an issue here in El Paso and nationwide now. Information provided about our state's graduation rates, UTEP's graduation rates are up, but they're still at a six-year, 42% graduation rate, which means our kids who are going to school at UTEP, they're taking time to go there, and they're most likely working, supporting the family, and paying bills as they're going to school. So they leave our schools with college credits as well as skills to help them find a higher-paying job. They probably don't have to work so much to be able to achieve their goals in a quicker time period.
I really like it, and everybody was super helpful about their tip with interviews, and overall, it was super nice. I've been trying to look for more of a better job that pays better, obviously, because I'm about to graduate high school, and I need to start looking for a better job.
Coming here made me realize like, a lot. Like, you can do, you can benefit for so much just by showing up, asking questions, and asking around, like, how does this work and stuff like that? So yeah, it's really beneficial. And going to summer, I do want to look for, again, internships or jobs or whatnot, make that like, little money on the extra side, and again, take that like, big step next in life, you know?
That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again, and see you next time. Thank you again and see you next time.
In the district of Socorro, aprender es innovador. Volamos drones, tomamos centro escenario, cuidamos nuestro medio ambiente, y aprendemos a cuidar nuestra salud para ser mejores aprendices de por vida. Las academias de primaria de SISD ofrecen programas únicos para inspirarnos, desafiarnos, y prepararnos para el éxito. Regístrate ahora y aprovecha tu oportunidad en el equipo SISD.
Hello and welcome to SISD TV News where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, Team SISD High Schools officially launched the Region 19 Girls' Flag Football Pilot Championship in partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans. The schools participated in a blind draft to determine the team they will be affiliated with.
This opportunity is for those female athletes, I think of my own daughter when we talk about this, and so we just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in a growing sport. There are scholarship opportunities, some of the schools, smaller schools across the nation are offering scholarships for it. So it's just another opportunity to showcase the amazing female athletes we have in the El Paso region.
I'm just really excited to get to, you know, learn as a coach and then help the girls learn and, you know, be football players. Like that's just something that we're going to learn together and I think it's going to be a really great experience and then hopefully expand it to UIL. Amen. That's going to be amazing.
It's truly their opportunity. They deserve the right to go compete. Football is the greatest sport in my opinion in this world and so, and so we do, we do so much for our men. We go above and beyond for our men, tackle and all these different things, seven-on-seven for our boys. It's our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we give those same opportunities and we give the same energy, we give the same effort to our young ladies because they deserve it, they've earned it, and it's just their time.
Students from Socorro ISD's six comprehensive high schools participated in Career Con XXL at Eastlake High School. Students had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with employers, learn about exciting career paths, and get advice on taking the necessary steps towards their dream job.
This is one of two, two Career Con events we have. We, all of our sophomores take a Financial Literacy class and it's a semester course. So we have a Job Con or a Career Con in the fall for about 1,800 students and we have one again in the spring for approximately 1,800 students. And Financial Literacy, we cover three different areas, personal financial literacy as well as college readiness and career readiness. Students create their endorsement when they're eighth grade, they revisit it when they're a sophomore, the last time they can change their endorsement is by the start of their junior year. So it's prime time for the kids to prep for college courses and also to review their endorsement and review the different careers that they can prepare for while in high school.
We get to like experience all these type of careers that we could like go into the future, like we have different options on which, which jobs we could participate, we have different options we can explore, because not everybody likes the same job and not everybody's going to have the same job, so we just get to experience the different careers.
It helps a lot like with people who aren't really sure like what they want to do after high school and just helps me like be aware of like what are my options and like what exactly like the jobs are into detail.
Team SISD's Project Search program hosted a Coffee Connections event where students with developmental disabilities can find a job and gain work experience. Students were able to talk to and network with possible employers who are looking to hire.
It started off initially as a networking event just to get the program out there and have the students highlight their many skill sets. However, as you've seen today, it has evolved more into a reverse job where these students are prepared to be interviewed, they have resumes in hand, they're highlighting the many skill sets to the today's employers that got invited.
It feels amazing and scary because this is, because this is your first time.
Project Search has always been a big program for me that I love to just volunteer like on my personal time and these kids are amazing. So here like at Rice Federal Credit and we are looking for the next diamond like in the rough and we feel that these kids are going to be those diamonds in the rough.
Pebble Hills High School student athletes Dorian Jaramillo and Sarian Quarles signed their letters of intent to play football and further their education at Tyler Junior College and Cisco College.
I picked Cisco because it makes me feel like I'm at home, like they make me feel comfortable with who I am. I mean, I'm a little nervous, but I'm excited, I'm happy.
TJC, I chose them because they're a great junior college, they're one of the best in the conference in the nation and they're really good at developing football players and getting them to the next level to Division One, which is where I want to be and I really like the coaching staff and the city, so it's a really good place.
Socorro ISD students demonstrated how technology has enhanced their educational experiences and equipped them with the skills to succeed in a digital world at the annual Academic Technology Showcase at the District Service Center. The district-wide event welcomes students from all grade levels to compete showcasing their technology skills, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and teamwork.
We cannot do this without the support of the teachers and the enthusiasm that they have in their classrooms every day and that's what translates into the energy that you're seeing today because it's evidence that kids are enjoying their learning and that they're excited about using technology in their classrooms. So when they get an opportunity to showcase their work, that's fulfilling the mission of this great event, that we actually give them an opportunity to show to the community all of the wonderful things that they're getting to experience and take up, be a part of in our district.
It feels amazing. I, I love it so much. I, I think that it gives me one foot in front of the door when it comes to going to college and stuff like that.
I think it's great. I think it's a really big opportunities for kids, you know, to get to, they get to experience, you know, different topics, different things, and I feel like that's great because my child gets to experience it and I just think that's great.
The Socorro Independent School District hosted its third annual Black History Month Art Contest at the District Service Center. 300 students from districts around the region showcased their art pieces of African-Americans in labor.
If we fail to storytell, if we fail to acknowledge what, you know, horrible things have happened in history and how we have overcome, then we're doomed to repeat that. And so for these kids from elementary to high school, it's super important that they know these stories and that, you know, we've done things to make people's lives better for a reason. And so, I mean, what greater avenue to combine art and history.
But it starts with the foundation of knowing what the history is about. So learning the history, knowing where we have come from, give them a better picture of where we are going. So just excited to see their creativity and all of the hard work they did and learning about these subjects of their artwork.
I'm really happy, I'm really proud of myself. I like how, I like that I get to show my parents what I can do and just like I like to show everyone what I can do.
America's high school student athletes signed their letters of intent to play and further their education at the next level. Isaac Arrieta will further his education and play baseball at El Paso Community College.
I'm just excited to just continue my career. It means it's a big thing, since I was little I've been wanting to play.
Isabella Núñez will be attending Grand Canyon University where she will continue to play volleyball.
I'm super excited, it's a great school and I can't wait.
Gisela Vazcal will continue to run track and cross country at the University of West Virginia State.
I feel excited, a little nervous, but it's like a good thing.
Visit sisd.net to get the complete list of students who have committed to furthering their education while continuing to pursue their athletic passion at the collegiate level. That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socoroiisd. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again and see you next time. This past year has tested us in ways we've never imagined. From navigating uncertainty to overcoming challenges. Each of us has played a crucial role in keeping our community strong and resilient. Through it all, one thing has remained clear: our commitment to our students' success. As we reflect on the challenges we faced, we recognize the strength of our unity and the power of being all in. Being all in means more than just showing up. It means giving our best every day, supporting each other, and fostering an environment where every student can thrive. It's about going the extra mile, finding solutions together, and lifting each other up during difficult times. Those who are all in inspire others. They show us what's possible when we refuse to settle for mediocrity. They remind us that greatness lies not in the outcome, but in the journey. The journey of pushing boundaries, overcoming setbacks, and becoming stronger with every step. So as we face the new school year, remember this: Life rewards those who are willing to give it their all. Whether you're pursuing a dream, facing a challenge, or simply striving to be the best, choose to be all in. Because when you are all in, you're a champion for all of us: students, employees, parents, and families. We are all in for Team SISD.
Socorro Independent School District has more than 48,000 students and 51 campuses, but we're not just a number. Here, we're cared for, we're loved, we belong. Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Want to be a health professional? Once a bulldog, always a bulldog. Want to design skyscrapers? It's an empire for that. Have you heard, "The early bird gets the worm"? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over 60 years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March 3rd for Kinder through 12th grade. Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs, and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait, secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
Socorro ISD offers 45 different pathways in CTE. We have added PTECs, Pathways in Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies and we also throughout the district offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals, so we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school, I feel like I'm doing something that I want to and the day goes by quick, super quick, and it just gives that sense of well-being and family and it really is a dream because I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend and through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection offered for our students.
The Libertas Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity, even as a high school student starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you want to go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
We're back from executive session. The time is 11:13 PM, the date is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, and we still have a quorum. Continuing with our agenda, discussion and possible action regarding requests from former employee Jay Costerena related to employment at Socorro ISD. Mr. Blanco. Thank you, Board President Nahara, Superintendent Vasquez, and members of the board. We had a brief discussion about former Chief Costerena and based on that discussion, it's my expectation that the board would entertain the following motion. If so, and somebody would adopt this, the motion would be to authorize the administration to review the reported T. Cole status of former chief Jay Costerena and, if possible, revise that status on the terms discussed in closed session and authorize the issuance of an appropriate letter of recommendation from the board.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve made by Mrs. Macias, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Continuing then 12B, consider approval of administrative recommendations will take Director of Emergency Management, Superintendent Vasquez.
President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Paul Solís III to assume the role and responsibilities as the new Director of Emergency Management.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Garde. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Congratulations, Mr. Solís.
Not that Solís.
Congratulations, Mr. Paul Solís III. 12B2, Principal at Myrtle Cooper, Mr. Vasquez.
President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Nora Macias to assume the role and responsibilities as the new principal of Myrtle Cooper Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Rodríguez, seconded by Mr. Woodcraft. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Macias. And 12B3, Manager of District Nurses, Mr. Vasquez.
President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Juliana Tarango to assume the role and responsibilities as the new manager of district nurses.
Motion to approve.
Agreed.
Motion to approve made by Mrs. Macias, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Congratulations, Ms. Tarango. There being no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 11:16 PM and the date is still Tuesday, June 24th, 2025.